Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is December the 7th, the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting, when I'll come to order. I want to begin by thanking everyone that came here today and let you know that we appreciate your social distancing. And we're limited to the number of people that's in the crowd, so if more show up, we will ask staff to vacate the auditorium so that more can come in. We'll begin this morning with Clerk of the Board doing a roll call, please.
Supervisor Johnson?
President.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes, President.
Supervisor Angus?
Here.
Supervisor Gould? Chairman Bishop?
I am here, thank you very much. So I also wanted to recognize that today is Pearl Harbor Day and give our thanks to those that have served and remember those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. We'll begin now with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Pastor Mike Hurd that will lead us in the prayer.
I just want to take this opportunity to give thanks to those who make their lives available to serve our fine county as our Board of Supervisors, and we are blessed that you have said yes to that particular task. And Lord, we ask you to strengthen them now this morning with wisdom and grace for the work that is ever before them. And we ask that they may manage their people and tasks with love and grace and keep their hearts pure and their eyes turned toward your face as they work in the best interest of the people of Mojave County that they serve. And we ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board of Supervisors, may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorneys on any item contained within this agenda pursuant to ARS 38, 431.03, A3, and 4. At this time, I'll entertain a motion and action, a call for an executive session to be held on December 21st, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. Let's be for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38, 431.03, A3, and 4 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does pass. I'll entertain a motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, and/or approval at this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the official business come before the Board this morning. First item will be discussion and pending or contemplated litigation, claims, or demands. Attorney Eskman, do you have anything?
Nothing to report to the Board, thank you.
Next item, under committee or legislative reports. We'll begin with Supervisor Johnson. Do you have anything to report?
Nothing, ma'am.
Okay, Supervisor Watson?
Nothing this morning, thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
None today, Madam Chairman.
Okay, I can only report that I attended the CES County Supervisors Association Executive Board Meeting as well as the CSA Board of Directors Meeting, and those were both done by Zoom. So going on to the County Manager's Report. Manager Elgers, do you have anything?
Good morning, Madam Chairboard Members. I have one item to share with you, and that is one of our procurement officers, Selena Leone, received a scholarship from the National Institute of Government Procurement Officers. This is a complimentary award. It will be virtual, so she will not have to travel. There is no expense to the county, and the value of the scholarship is over $400. So our employees continue to seek each and every opportunity they can to improve their performance and efficiencies. And that's all I have. Thank you for allowing me to share that with you.
Well, you're welcome. I always look forward to your reports because they're always positive, and I hope they stay that way. Thank you very much. Next item would be to approve any minutes, and we have none this time. So we'll go on now to the call to the public. This is to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Okay, we'll start by calling Scotty McClure. Good morning, Scotty. If you'd just give your name and city of--
Scotty in Bullhead.
Thank you.
Am I going to be able to ask questions on number 56 with the health officer?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a regular three-minute deal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, Ron Gould, Gould, oh, sorry. Want to thank you for posting the agenda on your front window there over the weekend. See, sometimes I come back from California, or I go down to Safeway, and that's where my bank account's at. And so it's easier to stop at your office and look at the agenda and the date of the meeting than it is to go all the way to Hildy's office, even though I live in Bullhead. But thank you, you finally posted this, so I knew what was going on before I got here. That's so simple to do. That's all I've asked you guys to do all this time. Post it on the window. You should post it out here. I've come here at 6:00 in the morning on Sundays. You should have it outside on the door here somewhere. Should be for-- We can't come in on Sundays or Saturdays to read the agenda, and the papers don't post it. Might be a good idea. I'm just asking to tape it on the inside, like you did, Ron. Thank you. Now, I know you asked, Ron, you asked Mr. Eskman last meeting about who was in charge of the handicap deal, and you turned your microphone away, so I didn't hear what the heck you guys were talking about. You shouldn't have done that. You should have responded to me, and I still want an explanation of who is responsible for the county unincorporated area, who's responsible for the handicap parking like at Safeway, which I've been griping at for several times now. Finally, they had taken away all the carts that used to block that door, run a bunch of carts there so you couldn't go in that door. People, Safeway's doors are not locked, even though it says, "Go to the other door." You can open it up, probably here in town, too. That's how they've been getting away with this, is because the doors aren't locked, but they got 20 shopping carts in front of it. That's locked to me. Walmart's been pulling that crap, too, by locking gates on the other exits. You need to-- Bullhead City finally made a law, $750 fine a day for this stuff, even though they're That's all I have, because you're going to let me speak on item number 56.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McClure. Next speaker--
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Before we proceed, could we have Ryan explain that what the law allows the Board to-- that we're not allowed to comment on call to the public?
Absolutely.
Because it's not on the agenda, and Ryan does a better job of explaining it than I do. Thank you.
So, under the law, for call to the public, the public is welcome to speak for three minutes, as we described, but the public body does not have a dialogue, it's not a question and answer. But instead, the public body may, at the conclusion, respond to criticism, or they may send it to staff for review, or they may ask for it to be placed on a future agenda. Those are the only three things that the Board can do at this point, is at the conclusion, respond to criticism, or give it to staff for review, or put it on a future agenda. This is not a time for question and answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Gould. Next speaker will be Robert Smith. Mr. Smith, we do have your written comments as well. So if you'd just give your name and city of residence, please.
Robert Smith, 906 Yucca Street, Bullhead City. Good morning, Chairman Bishop, Board Members and Staff. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. Some of you may remember me from the Parklands and Recreation Commission and the BLM Travel Management Plan. I again want to thank all of you who helped in moving that plan forward into a more positive action, especially Supervisor Angus, whose dedication and hard work really stood behind it. I'm glad to be here to ask, Brian, again here to ask for your help with another issue involving our beautiful desert. My wife and I travel in our Jeep all across the western states each year. We run probably well over 100 trails. Most of the travel is here in Mojave County. We have noticed the worst evidence of trash and debris illegally dumped here in our county, and I guess I can put a picture up here someplace.
There you go.
Back in 2009, I believe, the Board formed the ERACE program, and it's a program to help with this problem. It involves the use of volunteers to go out and clean up areas and possibly keep some of the people that are doing the illegal dumping. My club's participated in a lot of these cleanups, but it seems that within just a few weeks, the area that we cleaned up is now again filling with trash. Obviously, the plan is a good one, but it needs some more work. What can we do? Where I previously lived, the county landfill gave two vouchers per year to each individual household for two free dump days to be used whenever at your convenience. You could use them at any time. You had to provide proof of residency. Obviously, no hazardous waste or dangerous items were allowed, but they did have bins where you could dump off your batteries, or your electronics, or things of this nature, and they considered them recyclable materials. I know that Republic Services has participated graciously in a cleanup effort that I've been involved with by donating equipment and personnel. Maybe an agreement can be worked out with them. My wife, who has a career in the school system, has a great idea. She suggests that we involve the kids to help with policing their families through the school system, something like maybe the Drug Awareness Program. Who do we listen to more when we are potentially saying or doing something wrong or acting out of character? I know my granddaughter, who is now nine, will certainly catch grandpa doing or saying something wrong and quite openly correct me. In closing, I know that three minutes is not much to cover this huge problem, but you do have my contact information, and I would gladly help in any way I can to help resolve this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next speaker will be Kenny Works.
Pardon?
I was calling the next speaker.
Okay.
Kenny Works.
Is-- He's here tonight.
Ken Works. And maybe, and if you keep your applause down, you could maybe hear better. Good morning, Mr. Works.
Good morning, Kenny Works, Yucca, Arizona. I wanted to talk about cheating. I spent 30 years in the casino business, and cheating was the main thing, was always the main concern, both the house cheating the customers and the customers cheating the house. About equal results, it's almost an even trade-off, at least up until the beginning of the 90s. Also, the ratio of men and women in the casinos made for a lot of cheating relationships. And it seemed to be always the person that was doing the cheating accusing the other person of the cheating, so it gets pretty conflicted and confusing to determine who's actually doing the cheating. But we-- This is a Republican county. We vote for Republicans, and I think that we need to have Republican standards set forth that we go by. And when it comes to issues regarding trust, and I think that's where the COVID-19 problem comes in, with the numbers that are being reported, I don't trust them. There's just too much-- Too much hair raising down the back of my neck that brings my attention to the notion of cheating when I hear these numbers. And I want to thank you for listening to me, and hopefully we can get some honesty in the reporting of all these numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Jemaine Morgan.
For the record, my name is Jem Morgan, Kingman District 1 resident. So today is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, and I've been reflecting deeply on how they were all upholding their oath of service when their lives were sacrificed, and how on the day that I enlisted in the United States Army, two things happened. One, I swore the exact same oath of service as those who died at Pearl Harbor. That's a very sobering thought, actually. And the second thing that happened was I relinquished all of my rights, all of my personal privileges and freedoms and liberties. All of that was relinquished as I became government property and part of the military machine that actually serves to protect those same rights and freedoms for every other American. Of course, I got those rights back when I completed my term of service, but perhaps that's why I fight a bit more fiercely than the others. 14 months ago, I exercised a First Amendment-protected right to petition the government for redress of grievance, in this case with Mojave County government. And for the past 14 months, the message that you have been sending out to Mojave County is, "You don't have to respond if you don't want to. You don't have to respond if you don't like or agree with the complaint, or if it's politically inconvenient or personally uncomfortable for you. That you don't have to respond if the values, or the beliefs, or the political perspective is different than your own, that you just simply don't have to respond." And after fighting for 14 months to get you to respond, if I walk away now and let you off the hook, the message that I would be sending out to Mojave County is, "All of that is okay, except it's not. It wasn't okay 14 months ago, it's not okay now. It is never okay when you fail to respond to a citizen's complaint. We shouldn't have to sue our government to have our constitutional rights respected. I shouldn't have to sue you to get you to respond to my complaint." And yet, here we are. Now, I have long ago earned the right to have my constitutional rights respected by you. We have all in Mojave County earned the right to be treated fairly and equally under the Constitution of the United States and Arizona state law, because that is the oath of office that you swore to uphold.
Okay, the next five speakers are speaking on COVID restrictions and one where another. In the interest of time, if you want to choose one or two speakers, you certainly can do that. Otherwise, we'll begin with Anna Admire. Give your name and city of residence, please.
Anna Admire, a resident of Kingman. I'm here today to read a statement for Bridget Langston, who is also a resident of Kingman, but she's not able to attend today. So thank you for letting me speak on her behalf. We have spent the year watching Mojave County and the state of Arizona succumb to the power of propaganda and bribery. Today brings a new batch of potential palm greasing with the storage and preparation of the unnecessary poisonous vaccine, more snitching on businesses, and mitigating the impact of COVID on the elections, whatever that possibly mean now that the rigged elections are over. We've seen too many people following illegal orders out of fear and ignorance. So many businesses will never reopen, so many lives will never recover. And if left to some of those who are unfortunately in charge right now, it seems the worst is yet to come, but only if we, the people, allow it. Do not fall for another COVID-19 with the new and improved COVID-21. Title 18, USC Section 242, deprivation of rights under collar of law, the U.S. Patriot Act of 2001, Section 802, and something called the Constitution protects us from government overreach that is rampant. Do not fear public servants showing up to your businesses with a clipboard. Educate yourselves, know your rights. Hildy Angus and Ron Gould, you are outnumbered right now by board members who disregard the Constitution and the rights of the people. Hopefully, that statistic will change in January. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Carrie Chastain with David Lerner on deck, followed by Jeff
Carrie Chastain, Kingman. I had a couple questions, but since those aren't allowed, I'll just state. I was at the last-- One of the last board meetings, I learned that the citations for restaurants that were not enforcing the mask mandate were issued-- A citation for public nuisance, and instead of a health-related citation. I just-- I don't understand that. If it was really for health, it should be a health-related issue, not a public nuisance issue. I also have concerns about forced vaccinations. I have no intention of being vaccinated, and I know there's many others, and I'm hoping that you all will vote against the forced. You know, if somebody wants to take it, that's one thing, but we should not be forced. You are all elected officials to speak for us, and the people that are here is just a small fraction of the people in this county that are against what is going on. Also have a comment about the only reason that a certain supervisor was re-elected is because she had an R next to her name. I know many that ignorantly voted for her but are vehemently against wearing a mask. So this is not the end. Thank you.
Give us your name and city of residence, please.
Good morning. My name is David Lerner, and I'm from Lake Havasu, Arizona. Today, I'm going to talk about the wearing of masks. I was told to leave a business in Lake Havasu because I did not have a mask on. Now, in March, I had open-heart surgery, so I was the very top of the list that would get infected with COVID-19. I did not wear a mask. I did not die, okay? I also served four years in the United States Marine Corps. When I took that oath, I understand the oath, and part of that oath that you took so that you would defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemy, foreign and It's time to stop with the masks. They do nothing. There is science on it, and nobody's digging for the correct science. Stop with the masks and let the people be free and enjoy what has guaranteed them in the Constitution. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeff McGregor, followed by Chris Rodardi.
Hello, my name is Jeff McGregor, Bullhead City. I've talked to literally hundreds of people. I've gone up to people and said, "There is no pandemic, there is no COVID-19. This is a complete hoax to bring about martial law." And 99% of everyone agrees with me. Nobody believes this is for real. This is-- There's an ulterior motive to this. There is no evidence of COVID-19. The facts are all lies, and that's what everyone believes. Everybody believes that you people are oppressing us unjustly. There is no justice to this. This is a complete stealing of our rights. And I've said to many people, "What do you think the reason for this is?" And people will say, "Oh, it's to get rid of Trump. Oh, it's to bring about martial law." Oh, some people will say, "It's to bring about a bankruptcy of America, to bring America down, to bring us under control." There is no pandemic. Nobody believes there is. They don't believe it, and this is unjust, and thank you very much.
Give your name and city of residence.
Chris Rodardi, Kingman. The tyrant will always find a pretext for his tyranny. Today, we are witnessing a divided nation, wherein the elite sit back and laugh as we, the peons, tear each other apart instead of tearing them apart. We are at war with each other, which sadly has been the plan all along, divide and conquer. For example, the elitist nanny state establishes a complaint referrals line so citizens can snitch on each other and is awarded taxpayer money to pay for it. This is brilliant. You count on our ignorance, naivety, and complacency to take our money and destroy us with it, all in the name of a health emergency, and most of us bought it. This is tyranny in its ugliest form, setting citizen against citizen reminiscent of Nazi Germany tactics. And then there's the Immunization Services Fund, more dirty money, a hefty sum, to prepare us for the inevitable needle prick, more of our money to complete their global plan. We're already hearing hints of forced vaccinations, namely the coprocracy, as Supervisor Gould pointed out in the November 23 meeting. This is tantamount to the camel's nose easing ever so slightly under the tent until he's all the way in. It begins locally and metastasizes globally, but Mojave County can cut the cancer out right now by refusing this $125,000 bribe from the state. You can further refuse corporate COVID money tied to election costs in our county. A hefty $124,000, for what? To mitigate the impact of COVID-19 on the elections. Vague and elusive language designed to sell out the citizenry. Again, with our tax money, do we, the people, have any say, or will you just vote aye anyway after enduring this torturous call to the public? Our voices will be heard, and you must do-- torturous call to the public? Our voices will be heard, and you must do the right thing and refuse this filthy money. Our republic is at stake, and Mojave County supervisors can vote to stay the course to communism or say no and reverse these draconian edicts and mandates. You're the ones responsible for instilling fear in the citizenry in the first place. Take responsibility for reinstating freedom and liberty now. In the words of our founding father Benjamin Franklin, "Make yourself sheep, and the wolves will eat you." While the table has been set, the pot is boiling, a few strays are leaving the herd, more and more of us each day, standing up against tyrannical rule. We aren't going away. We're getting stronger with each dictatorial edict. We've only just begun to fight. We now direct you, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, the people's elected representatives, to show some courage, stand up to unelected bureaucrats, refuse the blood money, and put an end to this suicidal madness.
The next four speakers are speaking on the same topic, and again, the same offer goes forward. If you want one speaker to represent you, you're certainly welcome to do that. Otherwise, we'll start with Greg Bedford.
Good morning, supervisors. For the record, my name is Greg Bedford from Lake Havasu City. I've written to many of you in the past, and I've spoken to several of you on the phone regarding the COVID-19 mitigation measures. I'd just like to begin by saying that what we have here is a, is really a crisis of consciousness. People have lost the ability to distinguish truth from lies, and that's unfortunate. My dilemma, my problem, is as a citizen here, is to try to get you, both as supervisors, and to get other citizens of this community to understand that what is happening here has been, to you individually and collectively, has been by design. This has been socially engineered perception crisis. And what has happened as a result of that is there's now been a shift in worldview that consists of fear, mistrust, which you've heard other people here talk to you about regarding your actions, isolation, division. We know that that has occurred, and there's worldview violence that's been perpetuated by governments all across the country as a result of sticking to that narrative. You have an opportunity here today to show true leadership to this community, true leadership. True leadership doesn't occur through coercion. You don't coerce people, you don't threaten people to follow you based on coercive means. And that's what government does in their hierarchical and compartmentalized power structure. That's what government does. That's all government can do, is coerce. Leaders inspire people to follow them not based on what they will do to them, but what they can do with them. And what we're asking you to do today is support Proclamation 1776, which will support our constitutional rights. You will take a position that is opposite of the one that you've taken in the past, and that is, we will support the rights and the Constitution of the citizens of this county and of this country. That is your job. That is your duty. You are not responsible for my health. You are not, not responsible. I have autonomy over my health, my body, and when you intrude on that, you have violated my rights, my right to assemble, my right to free speech, my right to decide whether or not I'm going to put a mask on or not. You do not have the moral or the legal right to do that. So, we're asking you, again, to support this resolution. Thank you.
Stephen Tummenlo. I'll let you pronounce your name when you... I apologize. It's just one of those names I can't read. So, if you would say that for me, please.
Yes. My name is Stephen Tummenello, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of Lake Havasu City, the Havasu Patriots Organization, and Sheriff Richard Mack, founder of the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. The Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association is supportive and endorses the Havasu Patriots and Resolution 1776, declaring the city of Lake Havasu a constitutional sanctuary city. The chief law enforcement officer in Mojave County, our county sheriff Doug Schuster, has proclaimed that he is a constitutional sheriff, and the CSPOA and the Havasu Patriots proudly stand behind Sheriff Schuster. The definition of tyranny is the exercise of power with no legal authority. You have no legal authority to order the wearing of a medical device upon any citizen. You have no legal authority to close down any businesses over an imagined or even a real pandemic. You have been cited that Title 18 USC Code, Section 242, addresses deprivation of rights. Section 242 of Title 18 makes it a crime for a person acting under color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. Title 18 USC Section 1038 states that false information or hoaxes that make representations related to biological hazards, when there is no state of emergency, carries a maximum sentence of life in prison. Title USC Section 1040 states that fraud in connection with a major disaster in order to obtain money carries a maximum sentence of 30 years in prison. There's a misconception that there is immunity from prosecution in the event of an emergency, and emergency is the key word here. When there is no state of emergency, there is no immunity. Now, let me repeat that for the county deputy attorney. When there is no state of emergency, there's no immunity. Now, we at the CSPOA and the Havasu Patriots Organization want to make Lake Havasu City, as well as Mojave County, a shining good example for the state of Arizona and for the rest of the nation. If you fail to protect and defend the Constitution, Title 18 US Code, Section 2381 states that you can be charged with capital treason. Now, you at the county board of supervisors owe your allegiance to the United States. Would you aid the enemies of our country, you're guilty of treason, and that's capital treason. The tyranny that we're seeing across our nation being fueled by government trickle-down funding is what's causing these problems. Now, while the president is fighting tyranny from the top down, we're going to fight tyranny from the bottom up. Resolution 1776 is the answer to the 1984 Orwellian tyranny that we're facing in our country now. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell is next. Mr. Mitchell, are you here?
Yes.
I called your name, but...
I agree with the applause.
I know, I know. I can't get him to quit, so...
Okay. Well, good morning, members of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for letting me address you. You may have remembered that I came a few weeks ago and addressed you regarding the rescinding of your emergency proclamation, and I applaud you for having done so. The first thing I want to do is say that we haven't gone far enough yet. That's why we're talking about Resolution 1776. Basically, Resolution 1776 is an opportunity for you to restore the confidence in county government that's been lost because of the violations of the Constitution and violations of law under Title 18. So, this is, and understand something. You've all taken the oath in office. You've heard the liabilities that you face considering violation of law and these oaths. And I don't know about you, but I liken the oath of office very much like to people getting married. They get married, they say, "Yes, better or worse, till death do us part," and six months later, they're looking for a divorce because they thought, "Oh, those are more like rules than guidelines, aren't they?" And we've made it so that there's not any real penalty for doing so. However, the Constitution is not like that. The Constitution says that folks that violate it at the most highest levels are guilty of capital treason. Now, I don't suspect that any of you, when you came on board and were elected, that you were constitutional scholars and that you were doing anything other than coming on board and being willing to serve. And hopefully, that's why your deputy county attorney is there to be able to help guide you in these constitutional areas. Hopefully, he's doing his job. My question to him, though, would be, is he? Because there's clear violations. And if you don't think so, Deputy Attorney, I would like you to look up the Count of Butler versus Governor Wolf out of Pennsylvania, where very clearly defines that the COVID-19 virus protocols that the governor put in place were unconstitutional according to the First and Fourteenth Amendments. So, if you have any question about that, refer to that case law, because I'm here to talk about facts, not fear. I'm here to talk about the liabilities that you've already heard that you have, and the laws that have been broken, and the Constitution that has been shredded, okay? So, these are the things that I want you to consider. The other thing I want you to consider is that there is no pandemic. Why do I say that? Because if you look at the overall death toll, you can look it up on the CDC if you have a question about this. The overall death toll for this year for this nation is lower than the previous one where there was no COVID-19. How is that possible? Where are the bodies for COVID-19? You're within an acceptable scientific norm of this being no different than the year before. And if you look at it over the last seven years, you see that the rate that we are looking at for deaths is not spiked. There's been a gradual increase with the population, but there are other factors that are involved that keep us in that norm. So, my suggestion to you, and as you've already done, you've removed the emergency proclamation that said that we were in an emergency, I suggest that you enact the legislation or enact the Resolution 1776 to say that you are committing to do your job and will not commit resources to fund unconstitutional acts. Thank you.
Next speaker is Karen Vanderjack. Karen, are you here? So, that, oh, okay. Are you Karen?
I can't hear my last name at all.
It's a little noisy out there. You have to...
You need to speak up, because I did not even hear my last name being called.
I will try to do that.
Good morning. Why is it necessary for citizens to say, "Stop! The law is not..."
Karen, could you give your name and city of residence?
My name is Karen Vanderjack. Please turn off this thing when I'm going, because I have this time down to three minutes. Would you put it back at three minutes, please? Karen Vanderjack, Lake Havasu City, Arizona. Okay. Why is it necessary for citizens to say, "Stop! The law is not just"? It doesn't correspond to our rights in the U.S. Constitution. Obviously, the whole COVID pandemic and its destruction is the perfect example of power gone rogue. We, the people, had no means or control to even govern our own health. When I say destruction, I don't mean the virus itself. I mean loss of businesses, mental health concerns, unattended health issues, suicides, neighbors, snitching on neighbors, et cetera. Let's examine what happens when people have no means to govern their own behavior, and the people in charge act as dictators would in a third-world country. When the government is incentivized, calling a death a COVID death, for example, $13,000 and $39,000 if the patient is on a respirator, then a struggling hospital will and has been very creative making sure a COVID cause of death is attached to any death, including accidental deaths. This, of course, raises the morbidity rate, and it also raises fear. When the CDC demands all hospitals be prepared for an onslaught of dying cases, hospitals and medical workers fail to diagnose cancer, heart conditions, and diabetes goes unchecked. Cancer patients forego their chemotherapy and their larger fear being the COVID plague. When California opened to other cases, the ICU was full of patients who had amputations because of no control measures for their diabetes. Reality, in Lake Havasu, they had 32 ICU beds, and they were never filled to capacity. We had to take patients from Yuma because we had space. Now, let's get into the mental health problem, the damages that have been done, so-called deadly disease, from this deadly disease at 99.9% recovery. Well, there's 24% increase of elementary-age students who need mental health care, and for junior high, it's 34%. Suicide is up 300%, and one in every four adults that's between the ages of 18 and 24 has seriously considered suicide. Doctors all over the world have signed on to the truth of therapeutics that are safe and effective, but yet, the CDC, under government control, keeps these from the public or denies their success. Again, what can a citizen do when a government is out of control? Let's talk about the mask controversy. They say it's effective and it saves lives. Don't be selfish. You're killing people. Reality, they don't work. They said science had proven it, but it hadn't proven it. But a few weeks ago, the Danish study was the first actual scientific study, and they found out, hmm, it doesn't work. So, finally, the most insulting truth is the fatality rate of COVID. It's one-half of 1% total deaths in the U.S. and corresponding world has, as Bill mentioned, hasn't changed much as far as deaths. Again, what is a citizen to do? We need to have Resolution 1776 adopted so that we can follow the Constitution.
That was our last speaker, so I'll close the call to the public.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Can we put on the Resolution 1776 on the agenda for next meeting so we can talk about it?
For the county manager, you can do that legally, if you wish to do that.
That's what I'd like to do.
No, yes, you can put them in the next minute. That's how we generally do it. Yes, you can.
Because we can't talk about it now because it's not on the agenda.
Correct.
So, at the next meeting, it'll be properly noticed, and then we can talk about it.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I have closed the call to the public. Are there any other comments from the board members? Okay. So, we'll now go on to the Board of Supervisors' Consent Agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything you would like removed?
35, 36.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson, or Supervisor Watson?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Angus?
12 and 14.
Supervisor Gould?
No more than that, ma'am.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 12, 14, 35, and 36.
Still moved.
Second the motion.
Have a motion. The second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, item number 12 was pulled by Supervisor Angus to approve contract amendment number five for immunization services between Arizona Department of Health Services and Mojave County. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've taken this out in our backup, the explanation for this, to accept the additional $125,000 for the immunization program to cover temporary personnel to complete data entry and increased vaccine cold storage in preparation for the COVID-19 vaccine with revised budget. In our backup, it says, "Unfortunately, after exploring all options and considering the multiple demands on nursing staff time, the difficult decision was made to suspend immunization services to allow staff to focus on the COVID-19 response activities that have taken precedence. After today's appointments are honored, today being today, the seventh, childhood immunizations will be suspended until further notice. Previously-scheduled adult immunization appointments will be honored, but no new appointments will be taken." So, we are sacrificing our immunization problem to prepare for the vaccine. Didn't we take money for immunization?
I just want all these questions answered, and what exactly does taking this money mean for the vaccination going forward? Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus. So, I didn't hear all the questions, so I apologize. I came in a little bit late from my desk. We do...
First, I want to know, who made the decision to suspend the immunizations for, I assume it's children's and adults?
That's correct.
Okay. So, who made that decision?
I made that decision based on our resources.
I made that decision based on our resources. And right now, our staffing for nurses, which generally provide those services, is low. We are understaffed due to staff vacancies and unable to hire. We've had positions vacant for over a year, and we have individuals out sick as well.
Didn't the governor, in his latest rounds of COVID madness, say that he was going to be giving more medical help out to the counties, sending out? Are we exploring that and putting in our list?
We have not been made aware of any other resources available, other than what you see on the agenda at this time.
Okay. Ryan, can the Public Health Department unilaterally make the decision to stop early childhood immunizations, even after they have taken money specifically for that?
I'd have to look at what the contract says to see what they should or should not do. I mean, you're talking about a discretionary determination. They can decide how they wish to run their division. I don't know if there's any specifically in statute that would require them to do something. I doubt that there's a specific statute that would require them, but we want to look at what the contract says, because we may be contractually obligated, and if we're contractually obligated, there may be consequences to violating the contract. That doesn't mean that it's illegal, it just means it may be a violation of the contract. So we'd have to look at what the contract says.
Was this run by Arizona's Department of Health Services?
What happens, Supervisor Angus, is that we can make that decision, and we choose not to bill and actually don't choose, we just don't bill that particular program for services. So they're not being charged for those services.
Well, I don't know about the rest of the board, even the people out there. I don't know if, you know, it's like a Sophie's Choice kind of thing, right? So we sacrifice our young people to prepare to give vaccinations that we're not even sure are going to work 100% to the most vulnerable, who happen to be above the age of 78. I don't know if that's a decision, that is a weighty decision that I don't know if a health department should be making, frankly. So I would like the board to consider that and discuss it. And then my other question was, have we, I don't know if we're going to discuss it now, I guess we might as well, because it's about vaccinations and COVID-19 vaccinations, how that's going to be administered? I mean, when is the start date? So we're stopping our immunizations now, but when is the start date for these vaccinations?
The state will be receiving vaccine sometime in the next, probably two weeks or so, so it'll be immediately thereafter.
And how are we deciding who's going to get it?
The CDC and the Arizona Department of Health Services are identifying vulnerable populations round, in the first round, Phase 1A. The individuals that'll be eligible for that vaccine will be healthcare workers, long-term care facilities, and EMS, emergency medical responders, and there's a few other subgroups in there.
And what would you need from us, from the state, from ADHS, to do both? To do the other immunizations and this COVID thing? Again, I think that it is a lose-lose choice.
Certainly.
You know, I'm not for vaccine. I hope it never gets to a point that people are made to take it, but I do know people who want to take it, and they're free to do that. I just have a fear that we are going down a road that we will not be able to get back from.
Certainly. So to be clear, there are other places people can get childhood immunizations, that families can get those. So we are not the only game in town, nor do we want to be. It doesn't, we are not a medical home for youth. They should be getting immunizations in their medical homes. That is the appropriate place.
From the where?
Their medical homes. It's where they get their care, so from a pediatrician's office or a physician's office. In the absence of that, when that is lacking in a community, public health provides that service to ensure that it is provided.
So we're letting everybody know now? We're letting parents know? I mean, again, we beg for money, because we need this service, and then when it's a little inconvenient, we say, "Okay, just go." What we, you know, what I would like to have said from the beginning is, "Go to your doctor and take care of your kids," right?
Right.
But apparently, we have parents who don't do that.
Well...
But again, it's this, you know, it's this scale.
And I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay.
The caveat to that is that there are a number of private physicians that choose not to give childhood vaccinations, because the business model doesn't really support that.
Because of liability, basically.
Well, I mean, that's certainly built into it. It's the cost of reimbursement does not actually equate to the cost of providing the service.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So I would suggest that we separate the two, the immunization from the vaccine. The immunization was an ongoing program, was suspended, we hope, temporarily. We have a staff of six, a nursing supervisor and five nurses. Two of those five are currently out supervisors, so we truly are shorthanded. The governor did speak of $60 additional million dollars last week in his press conference to bring outside sources into the state. It probably will take some time to realize those. So my point to you is, our hope is this is not permanent. Having said that, the vaccination program is quite robust. It takes a lot of people to make it happen, and we are...
How much money did we get from CARES? From Arizona CARES? We got $9 million. Right, 9.1, thank you Supervisor Gold. Why can't we use some of that money to fill these spots to, and I know that there's probably, it's difficult to get people, but for a price, you can always get people. So why don't we use that money for really what it was intended for?
So you're absolutely right. For a price, you can get them. We are bound by certain base structure. We just don't have the privilege of going out and paying whatever private sector is currently paying for nurses.
Is that something that the board could take care of?
Perhaps, but we, at the present time, the structure that we have in hand makes it a little more challenging, Supervisor, to just hire the resources necessary, especially in the medical field, to provide the support needed. So it, again, we understand your concern. I am fully with you.
It's more than a concern. I think it's a dangerous precedent we're going down. And we have more than enough money, at least to attempt it, but to say that we believe this COVID vaccine, which, as you heard before, and I'm one of them, that it's real, but it's not the plague, as people refer to, is more important than our childhood immunizations. And why aren't doctors giving the vaccine? Why aren't the community, I mean, we're going to be responsible, our public health department's going to be responsible for all of the vaccines?
Are you, I'm sorry, are you referring to...
Yeah, I'm asking you a question.
To COVID vaccines?
It's the COVID.
No, 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 no. I mean, we have...
So you're going to do like the tests? You're going to give them out to other agencies to give?
That's correct, correct. I mean, we have a role in ensuring that the, that there is access to that vaccine, yes, but there are other agencies that are onboarding to essentially gain permission to provide that vaccine.
Okay, and this $125,000 is just for COVID?
Correct.
Well, then, I'm not for taking it, honestly. Again, it makes you beholden on the people who give it to you.
Supervisor Gold?
Denise, I had heard from young mothers in the Lake Havasu City area that the only place that they can get their children vaccinated in Lake Havasu was from the county health department. Is that true?
I had heard, Supervisor Gold, I had heard from North Country Healthcare that they were providing those vaccinations. So I intend to check to make sure that that is really the case. But that would be another facility that people could go to for those services.
Thank you. Also, the motion here, unless the contract amendment five contains the secession of the childhood immunization program, that's not on the motion today.
That is correct.
And so the motion today is to accept the money and adopt the plan. So it doesn't, the motion does not need to be separated. And I don't know that we're approving that policy under the motion, the recommended motion that I see here.
Is that a question?
Yes.
Okay. If I may respond to that, Chairman?
Yes, please do.
I'm not following much with the separate program. I've been looking all through this whole thing, but I'm trying to get up to speed on this conversation. But what I can say is, it looks like Supervisor Gold is correct. All we're doing today is adopting this amendment for this monies for this particular program. As to the suspension, I believe it's within their discretion to do that. She's running a public health department. However, we'd have to look at the terms of the contract to determine if that's something that we should reevaluate. I haven't looked at the terms of this contract, because I wasn't prepared to address that. It's not in the backup. I didn't even know that you guys are going to bring it up today, but I can certainly look at it to determine whether that's something that we need to look at to make sure that we are abiding by the contract. But in terms of her discretion, she's the public health director running her department, but that's something that she makes the call for. I don't see anything in 11251 that requires the Board of Supervisors to make that final decision. The supervisors have a great deal of power and authority, but at some point, you do have departments that run their offices and their procedures, and they've got to have some discretion to be able to do that. I think this falls within her discretion to do. If you disagree, then you can elevate it up to your position, say, "You know what? We want to take that away from her," but up until now, I haven't seen that. Unless you can show me something otherwise that will allow that.
So what you're, excuse me, Madam Chair? So what you're saying is, the public health director has omnipotent powers?
I didn't say that.
Well, yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
You just did.
No, I didn't. No, I did not say that. I said the public health department has certain discretionary powers within her discretion.
Who decides where that ends?
We do.
Exactly.
We do.
Okay.
Thank you.
But up to this point, you haven't made that call on this particular item.
Well, that's why we're talking about it.
Sure. And if you pull that away, that's what I'm saying, you could elevate it up to that level if you wish.
But if we take the $125,000, what you're saying is, we're going to do this COVID program, and in order to do it, we have to stop. So they are interconnected.
And I can see, I can see your argument here. I can, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
I see your argument, correct.
Supervisor Angus, we have a role in this vaccine rollout, and we're actually the allocating agency. So as vaccine becomes available, it is our responsibility to allocate that out to those providers out in the community, to ensure that we're meeting that requirement of the phases and that we're getting it out into the community to those in need. So we have a role regardless in allocating this. Generally speaking, as you know, we have a role in vaccinations, whether or not it's measles, Muncs, Rabella, Tuttus, Teptheria, it doesn't matter. So this falls naturally within public health.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus?
Yes, go ahead.
My suggestion to the board would be, consider item 12, because the community is counting on us to facilitate the delivery of the vaccine for those that do want it and need it. To that end, by approving item 12, you would enable us to do so. We will revisit the immunization program and the stoppage of that, and as soon as we can bring onboard some resources, again, we sincerely can tell you it is due to shortage, and as soon as we can cover that, we will resume the immunization program. Those are two separate items, and we would ask you to consider that.
Well, I'm going to disagree with you for the last time. They're not separate, and I will not vote to accept money that's going to stop another needed program. We have money. When there's money, you can do anything with money. So I think that you should put, you know, anything that you can do to bring on the resources and the staff you need to do both programs, or else we are making a decision who's more important. People in, you know, we're making that decision, and I don't think that is a decision that public health has a right to make. That's all.
Supervisor Angus, we understand the difficulty in the decision. It wasn't taken lightly in any way, shape, or form. I mean, we know the value of childhood immunizations. They are critical and very important for these kids, and we don't want to diminish that importance at all. But when it comes to staffing, you know, we're limited, and as you've mentioned, we do have some funds available. I can tell you that the hospitals are struggling to find nurses, and they're struggling to keep traveling nurses. So it won't be just us. I mean, we're all competing for the same resources with different abilities to pay and have that discretion. Many of these nurses working in these hospitals are easily commanding 50 and greater dollars an hour, and our pay for some of our supervisors and our nurses sits about 25. So we're looking at double, and that's just a money question.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Burley, item 12 referencing temporary personnel. Would you tell me how temporary, what length of time we're talking about temporary?
Supervisor Watson, I don't know that I could give you an exact timeframe. It would mean the immunization period that we would be working at rolling out this vaccine. So, you know, if I, if you, I would just be guessing if I said this, okay?
Give me your best guess.
Okay, so I'd say through April. As the vaccine becomes available, because you realize it's, as you know, it's just rolling out very slowly, and then...
Three to four months?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Next portion of this, increase the vacuum cold storage. I understand that the vaccine needs to be at a certain temperature, and what is that temperature?
For the Pfizer vaccine, that is minus 94 degrees.
Minus 94 Fahrenheit or Celsius?
Fahrenheit.
Okay. Then that, it can't be stored in liquid nitrogen, then, can it?
Correct. It comes with pelletized dry ice.
So the only way we can be stored is with dry ice. Is that correct?
Unless you have a freezer that can manage minus 94.
That can achieve 94 minus degrees Fahrenheit.
Correct. And then the Moderna vaccine is a less temperature, and I apologize, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it's a lower temperature. It's also less fragile, it's much easier to work with, and has a longer shelf life.
Well...
A lot more flexibility in the Moderna vaccine there.
Well, I think we're getting our hands around item number 12 a little bit better, because there are costs concerning temporary personnel, and there are certain costs above, way and above, any anticipated event that I've ever seen. I'm not sure that there are many people that have dealt with temperatures of a minus 94 degrees Fahrenheit. I have dealt with liquid hydrogen. I don't recall what that temperature is, but it's in excess of, I believe, below 12 Celsius. So I think it's very important that we make the decision this morning to approve item number 12 for those two reasons. We want to make sure that those people that are wishing to take the vaccine have that ability to do so. And with that, I'll make a motion for the approval of item number 12.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold?
I have an amendment for the motion that I've reduced to writing. I'll slide these under the barrier if you'd pass them down. The amendment reads, "If any one of the following conditions occur, Mojave County Public Health will cease participation in the above immunization program and return the unspent portion of the funds. One, federal, state, county, or municipal governments within our county require mandatory immunization with any COVID-19 vaccine. Two, the federal, state, county, or municipal government within our county require immunization with any COVID-19 vaccine to enter a public building, travel by airline, train, or bus. Three, if it is determined that 50% of the retail grocery stores in Mojave County require immunization with any COVID-19 vaccine to enter their stores."
And Chairman, if I may just add to this?
Mr. Eskman, go ahead.
So just so that we're aware, we're talking about a contract, and so they're offering the terms of the contract, and this one, it's amendment, but I'm just going to use the term contract, because it's an amendment to a contract. So these here, the way I read it, I want to make sure I understand correctly Supervisor Gold, these are not a counter to their proposed contract. So if we, if we're not going back to the state and say, "We're only accepting this if these conditions apply," because it's a contract, right? You go back and forth, you're horse trading, back and forth. One person says this, here's these conditions, you're going back and forth. Right now, they're offering these terms. We don't go back and offer terms to them. We could, we absolutely could, at which point, they could say yes, or they could say no, they could say, "Give us other terms." That, or your amendment... Or your amendments are for us only if these three conditions are met, or if one of these three conditions, excuse me, if one of these three conditions are met, then we would return the money and ask to terminate the contract. Is that, is it the latter? Is that what you're talking about?
Let's go with the first, where we make a counteroffer to the state that we're willing to accept their money under our terms.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we understand that that's what you're proposing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Supervisor Johnson, do you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. First, when we're talking about the immunizations, back in April and May, we stopped the clinic back then, and nobody seemed to have a problem. We also, about a week ago, stopped the immunizations. I think, Director Burley can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he put down as backup that we wouldn't be able to do the immunization, but we haven't been able to do the immunization because of the shortage of nurses that we have. And as far as Supervisor Gould's amendment, I would just as soon accept the original motion, and then we can come back and address the issues he's brought up if it becomes fruition, because we're just saying now, if they make things mandatory, we don't know if they are. It's just like we're jumping the gun, and we can always address that later. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson, that was a second on Supervisor Watson's motion, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we have the Honorable Judge Gertler at the podium who wishes to speak, and I will allow that.
Thank you, and may it please the Chair, Board members, management, counsel, and clerk. I have to reference the fact that next week, at the presiding judge's meeting, the Supreme Court has placed on our agenda for discussion and voting as to whether or not there will be mandatory vaccination of court personnel. I have taken the steps to ask all of my county, or, excuse me, my court department heads, as well as each one of the judges and the limited jurisdiction judges who have, you know, authority over their respective limited jurisdiction courts, as to what position I should take with respect to this issue. 100% of the court personnel have indicated that we do not want mandatory vaccinations. If someone wants a vaccination, that is entirely their right, their option. However, I am one vote of 15 presiding judges. I have no idea at this point in time what the other presiding judges may or may not do. I will certainly argue that there should not be mandatory vaccinations of court personnel. But as we sit here today, I have no idea nor guarantee as to what the ultimate vote will be, nor what the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court's decision will then be. So I want to make it perfectly clear, because I, when I heard Supervisor Gould's proposed amendment, which apparently has not been adopted as part of this, that if a governmental entity turns around and says that there's mandatory vaccination, you know, that you folks would not be accepting these funds and may jeopardize a program that some people in this county would want to participate in, I just want you folks to understand and know that, that I'm hoping that we will not, we will not have mandatory vaccination, but I have no idea until we vote next week.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Judge Gertler, I'm sure you'll agree with me that the State Supreme Court has no authority to order mandatory vaccinations over the public?
I cannot discuss an issue that I will have to be voting, nor that I might turn around and be faced with an issue or that I might have to make a decision on.
Okay, let me restate that. I will tell you that the State Supreme Court has no authority to order vaccinations of the general public. They have authority over the courts and not over the general public.
I agree. That's why I said whether there would be mandatory vaccinations with respect to court personnel.
Right, but I just...
I didn't say anything about citizens or anything else.
And I'm clarifying that for the public, that the judges have no authority to order vaccinations of the general population. They only have control over their own courts. For that to happen, it would have to be the governor acting or the legislature acting. But I just wanted to clarify that for the people. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to move my amendment again because I think I moved it improperly the first time. That way, it'll get a vote. So I'm going to go ahead, and we'll call this the Gould amendment, so I won't belabor it and have to read it again.
Okay, go ahead.
So I moved that the Gould amendment to Supervisor Watson's motion be adopted.
Madam Chair.
Hold on just one second.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, we do have a motion and a second to approve item 12 as written already.
Under Roberts' rules of order, I can amend motions.
Mr. Eskman?
Yes, so what I would say is this, let's vote on the first one. After that, we will take up the amendment from Supervisor Gould. Either way, it's going to be taken up Supervisor Gould. Either, we're just, we're just trying to, there's, generally speaking, we take up the motion that's been handled. Sometimes we'll try to amend it, and sometimes somebody will agree to amend or whatever. But the first motion was made by Supervisor Watson. Go ahead. I'd like to hear it.
I would argue that that's out of order and that the amendment needs to be moved first.
Okay.
Because it changes, the amendment changes the effect of the original motion.
Okay.
And to vote on the amendment after the motion would, may change how individuals might vote on the original motion.
Wouldn't Supervisor Watson have to rescind his motion and Supervisor Johnson rescind his second in order to...
No, I'm going to stop it right now. We're going to hear, we'll hear Supervisor Gould's amendment at this time. If it goes forward, then the amendment will be added to the motion. That's all the amendment is. It'll be added to the motion. If it's, if it's not, we have to have a second on it. You have to have a second on your amendment. If you don't get a second, then it dies, and we go to that motion now. So I would ask that we have a vote on Supervisor Gould's amendment, only if we have a second.
Okay. Is there a second on the amendment? Okay, the amendment dies.
Thank you, and now we can go back to the motion. Thank you, I appreciate your advice, I do.
Madam Chair, before we vote, may I ask one more question? Absolutely, go ahead. And statement, why must we take every penny that's given to, that is offered to us from the federal government or the state government? Why, we have the money, we have the original Arizona Cares. Why can't we put a couple hundred thousand aside for this purpose? Maybe she won't need 125,000. And for hiring new people? I mean, if we're going to give that power, let's give her the resources to make good decisions, not, you know, with the strings attached that you get when you get the state involved. I think that's what we're all kind of talking about. Once you take that state money, you're obligated, and we'll be talking about that in the next, you know, item 14, too, about what you have to do to make sure. Do they give you that money all at once, or do you have to reach benchmarks?
Supervisor Angus, most of that money is cost reimbursement, so it's only as we spend it. So if we...
Right, so every time you get it, you have to do them, and, you know, do that and get it.
Correct.
They gave us money. Remember, everything that, you know, it comes as a grant is all taxpayer money, still from your pocket. So whether it's coming from here, or we have more, you know, we have more control over it, or it comes from there, it's still the same pot of money, you know. Governments don't want you to say that, but it's true. So that's what I would rather see. So that's why I'm going to be voting no on this, because I just can't vote yes on something that's going to mean that another sector of our population suffers. Doesn't make sense to me.
But, Madam Chair and Supervisor Angus, all we're asking for is the resources to do our work.
Right.
That's it. That's our primary objective here, whatever that looks like.
If I could just make a comment here for Supervisor Gould. Accepting grant monies is something that the county does routinely outside of COVID and everything else. If we didn't accept grant money, which is taxpayer money, I agree with that, if we didn't accept grant monies, we would have to raise our property taxes, or we'd have to promote some kind of a sales tax so that the county has monies to do what we need to do to run the government. I just wanted to remind people that that's, we're very thankful for grants that we receive, and they do help us continue our work. Supervisor Gould, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just thought I'd take a minute and share an analogy that was brought to my attention by former Congressman Trent Franks, and his analogy was, with shekels comes shackles. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments before I call for the vote? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, and my vote will be yes. I think we have shown that we're shorthanded with staff, and we do have a responsibility to the community, so I appreciate what you do, Denise. Okay, going on to item number 14.
Before we move on, can I then make a motion to take $200,000 of the Arizona Cares money so public health can do what they need to do to get the staff that they need to get?
I don't think that's on the, it's not on the agenda.
But it's...
We could, I mean, look, we could stretch it as much as we can, but I would not advise you to do that. I wouldn't.
But that's what the backup material says. The backup for it included the immunization programs. So I'm saying more money for the immunization.
Supervisor Angus, I believe that money is in our general fund. If the Health Department needs it, of course, we would allocate it.
And Supervisor...
Bring it back to the board.
All right, we'll talk about it at the end, then.
And if I could just say, Supervisor Angus, I think you make some valid points, valid arguments. What I would recommend, you can bring this back in at the next agenda item, you can put it on the agenda, that way it would be properly agendized. We want to make sure that we do things in that proper order so that it doesn't invalidate it. If somebody were to attack that, then you may, it may be invalidated because it didn't follow the open meeting laws. I would rather, it doesn't need to be done today, it could be brought at the next agenda item so that it's properly agendized and so forth. I try my best to accommodate as much as I can, but I also want to make sure that we're doing things legal, and I would recommend you put it at the next agenda item. It'd be a whole lot cleaner to do it that way.
Okay, going on to item number 14. This was also a poll by Supervisor Angus.
It's the same argument that, so this one is that we're going to take $25,000, like we took it back in April or May, or whenever it was, from Arizona Department of Health Services to address complaints of businesses noted in executive orders that are failing to adopt. So I have a question for you. The new executive order from the governor says, two strikes, you're out. If you are, there are two complaints, similar complaints on the same issue, then we come in and close that. So is accepting this money, does that make it that you must, that we must go by what the state says, like we did last time?
Supervisor Angus, Madam Chair, members of the board, in the last contract, basically the focus of our enforcement actions were education and technical assistance. That's how it was worded. So the counties are making that decision about how to enforce the executive orders. And so we have, that's why the process was brought before you in our four-stage process, and why we brought that to you for approval, so that you could see how we were providing this path to compliance for businesses. And we weren't a one-and-done, we weren't a two-and-done. Matter of fact, to this date, we've given everybody a multitude of opportunities and provided even supplies to help them be successful in this process. So I don't believe this contract has any language that's different from that original contract. So I know I did see that, the enhanced mitigation measures. I believe that is if ADHS provides the enforcement actions, which they do have, I believe, last I heard, it was 32 investigators working on a state level responding to complaints in areas of the state. And I'm not sure exactly what they're, how they're called upon to do that action, if it's within counties where there's no contract for this service, or whether or not it's a matter of people working through the ADHS portal filing complaints. But, yeah.
And we haven't really changed what we were doing before.
No.
And we downed, we lowered the...
Correct.
The fee, the fine, or whatever it was.
Correct. And this is really reimbursing the Environmental Health Division of the Health Department for those services, because these are over and above their normal job duties. There are other areas where we would normally receive funds through fees and other types of activities, and those activities have been, I don't want to be, say, set aside because we still respond to complaints and we still do our job, but it's more difficult to do that within a 40-hour work week also. And some of these complaints don't take up much time, while others do. And either way, it's a, you know, it's a trip to that particular business, it's a conversation with that business owner or manager, it's the inspection, and it's the follow-up, and so on, so.
Do we still have the anonymous tip line?
We have been collecting the names of those individuals that call our department for, to file a complaint.
So it's anonymous at the state, but people must give their names here. Have you seen a drop in complaints when you ask them?
We have, yes, we have.
Okay, that's what we figured.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, certainly.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ryan, did we ever determine whether the governor's executive orders are a shall enforced by our Health Department or a may enforced by our Health Department?
I don't know. I'm trying to, I mean, I think what the governor's executive orders, it authorizes them to do it, but in terms of how it's implemented, it's within the discretion of the, discretion of the department through you. The department has come to the board, and the board has said, this is the process that we have approved. But in terms of, I think it's, I don't know if it's necessarily a shall or a may, it's just authorizing the department to do it if they wish to, in the manner in which they wish to do it.
So that sounds like a may.
Yeah, look, just, just so that, yeah, I mean, it sounds like a may. I'm not trying to skirt the issue, I'm not trying to do that. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to say, I don't think it's a shall or a may, it's, here, if you, I guess you could say it is a may, because if you wish to do it, then yeah, you can do it. And the board has authorized, or the board has directed the department how to do it. If the board wishes to change that, the board can do that.
Well, part of my concern is that the governor on Thursday at his presser decided it was going to be a one-strike system instead of the three-strike system that Mojave County has decided upon. So I'm concerned whether that's a shall or a may.
And let me clarify, we actually have a four-strike system. We don't even play baseball. We play a different form of baseball because we allow four strikes. So...
Okay, the four-strike system that Mojave County has adopted.
Correct.
But it sounds like the governor is saying it should be a one-strike system. So I'm still, most of the time, it's, it's, the state allows the counties to, they delegate their authority to the counties, but I don't believe that it's a shall be accepted. I think we get to choose whether we accept that authority or not.
And the board has. The board had, the board has directed the department how to do that through that force, the four-strike system, and if the board wishes to change that, the board can.
And my point is that we don't have to accept the authority.
And you don't have to accept these funds. If we're going back to this, into item, you don't have to. And just so that you're aware, and update, the public update, the remaining members of the board, I've already talked to Supervisor Gould about this, roughly half, I would say, roughly half have accepted this identical contract, the original contract. The other half the counties, for whatever reason, have not. One county, I can confirm, chose not to. They said, we do not wish to do it. That was Yavapai. Outside of that, I don't know why the other remaining half chose not to do it.
Which is interesting, because that seems to be the county that we often compare ourselves to as far as size and revenue. So we could choose not to accept this authority, and we could let the state, as an extension of the arm of the governor, send their own agents in here to eke out our sustenance. We don't have to do it to ourselves, because I believe it's a may and not a shall. But by accepting this money, that what we're saying is that we're going to go ahead and we're going to take the money, then we're going to go out and we're going to send our agents hither, just like out of the Declaration of Independence, to eat out people's sustenance, and I'm just not willing to do that at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair. We have enough money, I mean, for extra costs, for enforcement, we have money. We have enough money, I mean, for extra costs, for enforcement, we have money. I really don't, I think it is a signal that the, to the state that, you know, we go along with, you know, all their arbitrary decisions and mandates, and I just think for $25,000, you know, you wouldn't do it for $125,000, but for $25,000, we can say, thanks, but no thanks.
It is Supervisor Angus, certainly within your authority to do so.
Supervisor Angus, before Supervisor Watson has a chance to do it, I just want to remind everyone that we do have $65 million in outstanding liabilities that could become due, and that's something that should be in the back of our minds all the time.
But I need to remind you that this money was given to us for COVID. It wasn't given to us for our unfunded liabilities.
I agree with that, but if we have to take monies out of our general fund to pay for the Health Department requirements to do --
I'm not asking for the general fund, I'm asking for the money that was given to us for COVID-related expenses, and we were given a lot of money.
And quickly Supervisor Gould, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt Supervisor Bishop, but we would continue to follow our same protocols. We would not be following a one-strike and done as far as the ADHS protocols moving forward. We would, if we continue doing enforcement, we would follow our four-stage process as we have done since it was accepted and adopted.
And if I could, just to beat a dead horse, I'm sorry about this, but if you look at the executive orders, and this is pretty standard that the governor has put in each of his executive orders, you know, he talks about the penalties of failure to comply, and it says, an action is authorized and shall be taken to abate. So there's your shall, but I would argue that we have that discretion as to when and how it's implemented and so on. So that's why I have a difficult time saying, is it shall or is it may? Because the language says, and many of these say shall, but I will argue that you guys are deciding how that's implemented, and in many ways, we're doing education, 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 education. And so it's hard to say shall and may in this instance. It really is hard to do that, when the language specifically says shall, but I'm telling you, we're giving you as much discretion and latitude as you possibly can. That's why, I'm just trying to be as completely forthright with you guys, so that I'm not trying to hide anything there.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
And this is the problem with rule by executive fiat, is this, these rules have not come, gone through the legislature. The governor refuses to call the legislature into special session to address, so that they can address their grievances. So we get these muddled executive orders that come forth that haven't went through the normal process that goes through the legislature, both houses of the legislature, where it's amended, where it goes back and forth until the sausage-making is done, and then it goes to the governor for signature. We have a governor that's putting out executive orders by his own and ruling by executive fiat, which I object to. I didn't vote to give him those powers when I was in the legislature, because I don't believe in the rule of one. We fought to throw off a king. I didn't, I don't want a king, the King of Arizona, nor do I want the King of the United States. But we don't have to take this. It doesn't cost anything if we don't do it. So then it's not a hit on the budget. But I'm just not willing to eat out the sustenance of our own people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop, for recognizing this portion of the deal. If Supervisor Gould feels that $25,000 would obligate us, then why not make a motion to refuse the dollars?
To refuse?
To not receive the dollars.
Okay. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't want the money or the authority, and I just, I don't want our Health Department doing it. If the governor wants to issue these executive orders, then let the governor send people that are under his direct authority up to enforce the executive orders. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think what Supervisor Watson was saying is time to vote. So I make a motion that we not approve the contract amendment as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded to not accept the funding. Is there any discussion before I call for the vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes to not accept.
Supervisor Bishop, can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes.
Are we still following our protocols for enforcement?
I don't believe anything was stated to change our protocols.
Okay.
If you run out of money, you come to the general fund, and we'll fund you out of that.
Okay, that works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is item number 35, polled by Supervisor Johnson to approve the certificate of removal and abatement of 13 parcels of personal property. Total amount to be abated is $2,446.27. So we have Luca at the podium, ready to answer questions. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking through the people who own the money, the first one that popped out was Trent Pike. And we have a statement saying we can't find him or anything else, when he's been into our office for the last, I don't know how many years, and he's a, you know, relative of a former board member. Also, in the clearing of uncollected taxes, it states that the county treasurer, sheriff, and security are unable to locate both the personal property on which the tax, and the person owning the property. Sees to me, we can find the person, we just don't give them a free pass. And I guess the last part would be, I see, some of these are over a year old again. I thought we had agreed that we were going to do these as they're supposed to be by statute, that they're due and payable, and they are still payable. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I just want some clarification. Which particular parcel are you referring to? The 0201-502-1010 with the owner Timothy Trent Pike? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So I believe on the affidavit I have from the sheriff's office, who conducts these investigations, it notes that the personal property is in very poor condition or has been destroyed for that particular parcel.
Yes, I read that, which is a little confusing. I would think it would either be in very poor condition or destroyed. I don't think it could be both. But still, the statute says that we can collect from the person if the property's not there. What we do is we take the property and then we sell it for what's owed, but we still can go after the person who owes the money.
That is correct, I believe. I'm not sure with this particular property, what the final resolution was, or the outcome of the sheriff's office investigation, whether that property was completely destroyed or was in poor condition, and their investigation indicated that it had been so at the time the taxes were assessed, because if that was the case, it shouldn't have had taxes assessed against it if it had already been destroyed at that point.
I guess the other question I was looking to ask before is, when are we going to be up to date on collecting these taxes?
I can inquire with the sheriff's office, Supervisor Johnson, and get that answer for you. I know that there, through our last several discussions, there was a backlog of these properties, and as indicated by the fact that we've been submitting properties for abatement every month for the past, I believe, five to six months since those discussions, the sheriff's office does appear to be working through that backlog. But I can certainly get a definite number of how many are left in that backlog for you.
Thank you, sir. That, those are my questions, Madam Chair. Boards can do what they want.
Okay, any other comments? Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. I'd like to make a motion to continue this item for further clarification for Supervisor Johnson's until the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor to continue, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item, number 36, also polled by Supervisor Johnson, speak to approve the merit-based compensation adjustments with the treasurer's office for the remainder of FY 2021.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pulled this off, and I've had a conversation with the treasurer also. I am very much in favor of us instituting merit, but when we don't have it county-wide, I don't feel it's fair to have it in one department.
Okay, Treasurer Cox?
Well, Madam Chair, sorry. I would think this would be an issue that we could take up at budget time.
Okay, do we have Treasurer Cox on, in the audience? Or anybody representing the treasurer's office?
I'm line, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe that Supervisor Johnson and I had a conversation about this particular item, and he's very clear about my position, how this affects my office, and how the forward momentum that I've had over the last four years has driven my office to have lower costs. We've streamlined a number of things and give back positions as we possibly can. I understand where he's at in terms of one department as opposed to all of departments, and he and I also had that conversation, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Johnson, but this is more of an issue, I believe, of the board deciding what all departments have the latitude to do. Not my item agenda, but his particular issue.
Correct.
Okay, so Treasurer Cox, this was budget neutral and, I believe, was an oversight at, during the budget hearings, is that correct?
Correct. It was something that was in the budget for the last three years, and I mistakenly assumed that once a new initiative is through, it carries over to the next year. I learned my lesson, and it will be in the next budget, but I had forward momentum that I would like to continue for the next six months, based on results that have happened for the last two years, as I spoke with most of you about, and that's what I'm asking for.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions of the treasurer?
Thank you.
Supervisor Angus.
Oh, no, I'm just ready to make a motion.
Okay, all right, thank you, Treasurer Cox. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman. I believe the reason this item is back is because it needed to be approved on a yearly basis. Is that correct?
I think it's just for this year, and then it'll be taken up in the budget the following year.
But then thereafter, each year, it would have to be approved again, I believe.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Watson, yes, that is the case. And if you have any further questions, I would ask Carl Lloyd, our finance director, to step up and help answer some of these questions. But yes, the answer to your question is yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. I have a little difficulty in authorizing this item this morning, because it's the same issue that Supervisor Johnson has presented, in that each one of our different divisions is unable to perform that on an equal basis. Although we have done this in the past, and it is budget neutral, I can approve it this year. But I think that in future budgets and future deliberations, there should be taken a very serious look at compensation measures for each and every one of our individual employees. And that's my only comment.
Okay, thank you. So entertain a motion if the discussion is over.
Madam Chair, motion to approve item 36.
36.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, at this time, I'm going to take a five-minute break, and we'll resume. Okay, we'll move on now to our public hearings. Going to item number forty-five. I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action regarding the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-173. So rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 40233137 to allow for a recreational vehicle park in the Littlefield vicinity. I do have, um, a couple of people signed up to speak on this item. Looks like Jackie Galvin.
I'm left-handed, sorry about that. It's actually Jackie.
Okay, I, I just need to move the paper.
Uh, good morning. I just wanted to say I'm completely humbled by all the passion in the room here from everybody.
Could you give your name and city of residence?
Yes, it's Jack Galvin from Henderson, Nevada.
Great, thank you.
Again, I'm just humbled by all the passion from everyone here. It's, it's really great to witness. And to the supervisors for having, um, prayer is the foundation of the meeting, I think. That is well deserved in this time for everybody who is hurting. Faith and hope are about all we have to turn to, so. Our hope is just to put a simple RV park up at the top there. What we've noticed is we're in the process of buying the land that there's probably twenty, twenty-five people that come and park on that land already and go down to the river and enjoy the area there. And we believe that just putting a safe, simple, beautiful, clean, uh, not-too-big RV park there would bring some sort of order and security to the area as well and maybe protect and preserve the surrounding area as well. So, I gave you guys all a copy. I just wanted to say hello and thank you for the opportunity this morning.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for the Speaker?
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Watson?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Your parcel certainly is worthy.
Thank you.
Of consideration on that. My concern is the spring that is approximately three quarters of a mile down towards the Virgin River gorge there.
Sure.
Are, are you going to be providing any type of roadway for that?
Well, we've been asked by-
Ingress and egress for those people that are going to be going down there to that spring?
So, we had this conversation, uh, from a gentleman who is actually going to speak here today as well, I think. Was related to him and the county planning, uh, had spoken, called us about that concern. And they said that their position was, you know, there's these rules and regulations and the residents would like this and that and nobody can ask us to really do anything there. But what we did say is along that line where the road goes, we're going to leave, I think it's a sidewalk with access that the public could access that area if they wanted to. We, we don't want to take away from the locals. We want to bring something that actually helps the community, maybe brings a little commerce and maybe provides a little safer environment for people as they go there. So, we are going to leave an access way, but we were told by the county when we spoke to them in planning that maybe that's not something they can ask us to do, that ADOT has some regulation there as well. And, but we're allowed if we wanted to leave a little walkway section along the outside of it, which we are going to do. And that's, that's maybe not here as a preliminary plan. Our next step is to meet with the, the county and do the pre-planning so that we can submit something ready to go. And not waste any time, but our, our intent and we will leave a little access walkway so that residents can go. Now, we're going to have parking inside there too. So, we don't know if we have room for outside parking, but we might have some parking that, you know, locals could maybe have a few spots or something or outside people because-
Right. And my concern is that you would be inundated on some holiday weekends with people trying to, to get there and parking and making your, uh, park inaccessible.
Sure, and, well, we will, we will have access there, yes. And, um, but what we've noticed is routinely and for years in that area, people have broken onto that land to park and a, access that area instead of going around to the other side. So, I, I would just think that some order there would-
Would be helpful?
Would be helpful to everybody, sure. And, and we understand there's some history of the community there and that kind of stuff. So, you know, a lot of RV parks will give you a one-page with kind of a map layout and stuff. And our hope is to maybe on the backside of that, we'd put some of the rules of, you know, about your trash and everything. We want to keep it clean, but, you know, BLM, we told them we might put a little sign-up for them or something maybe on the back of that pamphlet just as a courtesy to say, hey, don't do this or that. I know there's turtle protection, I think, in that area.
Correct.
And, uh, maybe we'd also highlight a few local businesses as well on the back that people could call and order food or, you know, to help commerce in the area as well. So, our intent is just to provide a good, safe little place there. It's a beautiful area for it. I've noticed during these trying times that a lot of families have finally started spending time again. And I don't think that that's going to end when all this craziness ends as well. And I'm, my hope is that family would be able to go enjoy the area and that, again, it would bring some commerce. And the area is starting to change from what I understand from other people I've spoken to.
Yeah, it certainly is changing. And I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, that jointly the Department of Transportation, Mojave County, and volunteers can help maintain that spring where it's not trashed every weekend and on the holiday weekends.
Yeah, and we know that we'll have some security onsite. I don't know all the details of that yet, how that works, what hours or when not. But we think, again, that will contribute to a little more order and-
Thank you.
Area as well. And we appreciate all your help too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chris? Fordham? Give your name and city of residence.
I'm Chris Fordham, Littlefield, Arizona. And I'm the founder and spokesman of the Foundation for the Preservation of Little Jamaica. And my concern with this, uh, project, and I spoke with Mr. Galvin about it since the hearing last month, was the walking access to the river. And I believe that's been there going down the side of the mountain, there's not room there really for a vehicle or anything. It's a walking path. And I'm sure it's been there since the Indians used it before even the Mormon settlers came there in the beginning. And access and easements in that area is, uh, very important. The river itself, the Little Jamaica is a natural wonder and should really be a park in the beauty of the, of the community up there. And it should be embraced instead of, you know, abused. And I founded a nonprofit for that purpose. And Mr. Galvin seems very cooperative. He's the only landowner that really has any claim to any part of Little Jamaica. The rest of it's either BLM or, well, BLM primarily. There's some other private owners on the other side of, it's kind of expanded what people call Little Jamaica or, you know, it's had different names over the years. I've only been in Littlefield three years, but it has a very documented history up there because of the Mormon influence. And I'm, you know, becoming an historian at this point. I believe there's a lot of right-of-ways up there that were originally made and should be considered right-of-ways through to this day. And, and it's such a limited area there of private ownership. A lot of the land up there is, you know, government issue. And it did start from four families of the Mormons that moved there. And, and all those roads were open in those days, the foot paths and the roads. And because everybody was friends and family and related. And as other people started to move in, people started putting locks on the roads, on the gates. And, uh, the easements are not recorded apparently, all of them. But I was up to the assessor's office. They said they're not in charge of, uh, recording easements anymore. But I see that as becoming an ongoing issue in an area where access is very important and private land is very limited. And, um, I just, uh, I'm sure we're going to speak again. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of the Speaker?
Madam Chair, can I add one thing?
Yes, certainly.
I thought this was important too. If you notice the map that I, that I provided you guys, we're only using about the top half of the land. Although there is some slope and stuff that goes down to the river, but we've left about half of the land that we purchased in its natural habitats. There's a lot of natural beauty there. So, we don't intend to, you know, disrupt anything other than where the flat part really was at the top. And there's a little ridge where we're just going to provide some picnic tables, you can see, for people to, you know, kind of sit on the ridge. But we, our, it was, we would never want to destroy or damage or harm or change any of that beautiful, beautiful area that's the latter half of, of the plan there. So, we want to keep it natural, so.
Looks beautiful. Thank you. Okay, I'll close the, uh, public hearing. Open it up for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve. Item number forty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number forty-six, I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action regarding the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 202174. An amendment to the Mojave County General Plan and an amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public hearing. Open it up for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve, item forty-six.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item forty-seven, I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action regarding the, uh, adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-175. A rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 40217063 to allow for a minor land division and wastewater treatment plant in the scenic vicinity. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up for a discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve, item number forty-seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item forty-eight, I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action regarding the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 202176. A rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 31749102 to allow for retail office buildings in the White Hills vicinity. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, so I will close the public hearing and open it up for a discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move that item forty-eight be adopted.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, item forty-nine, I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action regarding the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 202177. Special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 31749102 to allow for a billboard in the White Hills vicinity. I have no one signed up to speak on this, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up for a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold?
I move that item forty-nine be adopted.
I move that item forty-nine be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number fifty, under the regular agenda, it's be a discussion of possible action to acknowledge receipt of and refer to Public Works' petition requesting that East Calle Chavez from North Goodblood Way to North Bank Street be accepted into the Mojave County Road System for regular maintenance, subject to meeting all applicable requirements and subsequent Board of Supervisors approval.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second the motion.
Wait.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Maybe pull your mic down a little bit. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Watson, seconded by Supervisor Angus.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Is this a dirt road, or is this gonna be a paved road? I always have a hard time telling in the background.
It's a, it's a gravel road.
Wow. Thank you.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
A motion passes, three to two. Item number fifty-one, setting as a Board of Directors on the Horizon Six Improvement District, discussion of possible action to set a public hearing for February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, to consider increasing the future maintenance reserve fee for Horizon Six Improvement District water system customers. I do have one person signed up to speak on this item, Mary Van Roy. If you'd just give us your name and city of residence, please.
Yes, Mary Van Roy, and Lake Havasu City, in Donkey Acres, forty thirty-four Blue Canyon. And I'm here to say that we do need to get the money in to improve our, our water infrastructure. And it's been so much confusion and misinformation, and actually, in the newspaper, the most recent article says I'm a commissioner, and I had to Google that to see what a commissioner was, and I am not. We're just community property owners, and an improvement district has already put in our water system forty years ago, and then the roads about twenty years ago, which I participated in getting those petitions signed, so I had a little bit of history with that. And this is from back in nineteen eighty, saying the Board of Supervisors is responsible for us. And we did have an advisory group, and those were some property owners, and they were actually paid to read meters, send out bills, and do that. So, back in the day, even though the Board of Supervisors is responsible, and I think people are confused, thinking that we as residents actually have some say and some authority, and we have none, and it is strictly, has always been, the Board of Supervisors. So, back in the day, we did have this advisory group, and we did have annual meetings, and it was kind of fun, and I kind of miss that a lot, that we don't have more information about our improvement district. That's where the confusion comes in, and people think it was like a hostile takeover, and it really wasn't. It was just never legal for some people in the neighborhood to run the water company. And this was the financial information we used to get, and you can see, we had like a hundred and sixty-seven thousand in our reserve fund, and back in the day, we didn't have that many repairs, so that was nice and healthy, and it looked good. Then, now for this new improvement district, or for the improvement district to do the new infrastructure, we have a petition now that is like very difficult, and I thought you guys should see what it looks like. It's eight pages, and it just goes on and on, and it's so legal that people are very hesitant to sign it, and I could show you all eight pages, but I don't think it's in your information. And so, we've only gotten forty signatures, and we should have at least a hundred and seventy or so for a majority. We can keep trying to get these petitions signed, and I think that is our future, but for now, we need to get some money in, and it's only the people who live out there who are paying for this, and we're not getting any county money for our roads or water or anything. And what you're talking about now is increasing our water costs for the infrastructure, and when that happens, hopefully, we'll start to get some money in to do the improvements that need to be done. Our water runs, so people are very hesitant to sign a petition. They say, "Why should we give an unlimited amount of money, which no one will tell us anything how much it'll cost?" And we can keep working on, oh, it's over already.
I can give you a little bit of time to finish up.
Well, I actually brought one of my water bills to show that, you know, we've been paying anywhere from twenty, thirty dollars a month for all these added things above the water, and way back, and I actually have a PowerPoint from, I think it was twenty thirteen, when they actually raised our rates that time, and this is just a little map of our community, which is acre properties, and then these additional properties, which are more large parcels, were added. And I know back in September of last year, you approved, I think it was twenty-four thousand or so to put in our, replace or repair the, there are no repairs because they're not there now, but the pressure-reducing valves, and then we had air valves, and we have fire hydrants that don't work, and there's a lot of leaks and a lot of repairs, and you have to break the black tub. So, it's very expensive, and we're spending like thirty thousand a year, but I think we're getting in about seventy thousand into the funding, but it goes to, you know, the city for their contract that they have running our water system and delivering water to us.
So, Mary, you're in support of this fee increase?
Yeah, obviously, we have to have a fee increase to start covering it, but it's gonna take forever to actually get it that way, whereas a bond would have been nice because we would have had the, all the improvements taken care of. This way, it might take, they're saying now, it might take five years to even replace the PRV valves, and that would help save our pipes, so there's a lot of reason to, to try and get the money in as soon as possible, but if we can't, the only thing is to raise the fees. My big issue and the people...
Mary, I'm gonna have to cut you off, and we hope that you come back when we do schedule the public hearing and share all this information with us again.
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe bring some of the, the other people that are in the improvement district.
Yeah, I think they just feel kind of frustrated by the whole system as it is now.
We would love to hear from them all.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that everybody had to pay instead of only the people with water meters, and that's been the big issue, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Motion to approve, item fifty-one.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number fifty-two, it's be a discussion of possible action regarding accepting the warranty deeds dedicated to the public for public roadway and utility purposes northwest, in the area northwest of Hackberry, Arizona, and further authorize the clerk of the board to sign the acceptance form.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve, item number fifty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number fifty-three, this is a discussion of possible action, approve the reconsideration of the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-092, a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 31361072C, 072D, 072E, and 072F. That's in the Hackberry vicinity, and it was denied by the Board of Supervisors back in August sixth, twenty twenty.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson.
I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration on item number fifty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-three B, this is a discussion of possible action, approve the setting of a public hearing for December twenty-first, twenty twenty, for the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-92, a rezone of Assessor's Parcels Number 31361072C, D, E, and F, to bring parcels into compliance in the Hackberry vicinity.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson.
Move to accept and approve setting the public hearing for December twenty-first, two thousand twenty twenty, for the adoption of Board Resolution 2020-92. Like to also add that respondents on this have gone through a great deal of work to get the cooperation of all the property owners involved, and I'd like to thank them for their job well done. That was a very challenging situation that has come to resolve itself. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-four is a discussion of possible action, options including possible settlement, and provide instruction to the county attorney's office regarding litigation in TX twenty sixteen dash zero 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 eight nine three. Supervisor Angus.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we direct counsel to engage in negotiations for settlement of claims as recommended by the Mojave County Treasurer and County Attorney's Office.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson.
If I could, please. I believe it's in the best interest of Mojave County to show good faith in pursuing the closure of this item that has been on our books for well over eighteen years, I believe. So, I'll be supporting the motion.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-five, this would be a discussion of possible action, identify and implement procedures for approving or denying organized public events of more than fifty people in the unincorporated areas of Mojave County as required by Executive Order twenty twenty dash four-three and Executive Order twenty twenty dash five-nine. Mr. Eswin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a little bit of, well, first off, we're gonna be, we're seeking some guidance from the board here, and let me get a little bit of background. There was first Executive Order twenty twenty dash forty-three, and in twenty twenty dash forty-three, that was the governor saying that any public events of fifty or more need to have approval from either the town, city, or county. And so, let me just kind of dissect that just a little bit. One, it is public event, so I take that for what it's worth. A private event would not apply. If it's a private event, then it would not be covered by it. It's only public events. Also, this does not involve any constitutionally protected activities, such as anything of free speech, freedom of religion, First Amendment activities, and so, it doesn't apply to, for example, churches or somebody that's having an assembly for a protest or something like that. So, so that's, that is Executive Order twenty dash, twenty twenty dash forty-three. When it was brought to the board's attention, the board has not taken any action in terms of how to approve a public event, and the board just hasn't made that decision of how to approve a public event in the unincorporated areas of the county. And the board can continue to take that position. The challenge, though, is what has happened since twenty twenty dash forty-three. If you go to twenty twenty dash fifty-two, that extended it, so extended the timeframe, so we're still under that twenty dash forty-three. And then, last week, the, the governor issued Executive Order twenty twenty dash fifty-nine, and now twenty twenty dash fifty-nine, I think really the board here is gonna have to give us some direction as to how to implement that, and here's why. In twenty twenty dash forty-three, it stopped the issuance of the liquor license for special events. I believe it's a Series fifteen liquor license, and so, when it, when it did that, it ceased that operation. So, so let's take like a, a public event, it's maybe a carnival or something like that, where they want to get us a liquor license. Executive Order forty-three ceased that. Well, in fifty-nine, fifty-nine, the one that the governor just passed, said, "Okay, the liquor, liquor department, Department of Liquor can issue those again so long as the event has received the approval from the jurisdiction." So, what I'm saying is, the reason why we need to make some kind of decision here, at least our recommendation is to decide something, is that if there is a public event, over fifty or more people, and they wish to have a liquor license, they will need to get this board's approval to do that. And you could do that a couple of different ways to, to, to do that. You could give it to a department, have a department approve it, or they could come directly here. I mean, the, whatever way you wish to do it, you can, you can say that, but I, we've gotta get something here so that if there is an event of fifty more people and they want to get a liquor license, among the other steps, one of those is gonna be, they're gonna need your approval. Also, I'll just, I'll just make you aware that on fifty-nine, there's some additional requirements that the governor has put, and this kind of goes along with what Supervisor Gold was saying with the governor's orders and the difficulty of implementing them. Just a couple of things to point out, is that if, if the board approves an event, the board, it, it says, let me just kind of get here, that the, that the jurisdiction has to dedicate reasonably adequate resources to enforce mitigation measures that the organizer has agreed to implement during the organized public event and any public health requirements currently applicable in the jurisdiction, and to publicly post the mitigation measures that the event organizer is required to implement and enforce on the jurisdiction's website. So, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing this to your attention, that Executive Order fifty-nine, if you do adopt procedure, we'll have to put it on our website that we've approved, we've approved somebody, if somebody comes and says this, and then also assist in any way to try to make sure that their mitigation measures are implemented. It's a lot there, and I'm sorry, I've given you a lot to chew on, and we can break it down as you wish, but just so you know, those are, that's what's happening with Executive Order fifty-nine. And, go ahead.
Madam Chair, also, board members, currently, any liquor license for special events already, through our own policy, come before this board, so we do have a partial of what you just described in place already, because every liquor license does become before the board.
And that's a good point that the clerk has made. It could go through that process. I think the, the liquor licenses that are brought before the board are not the ones that we're, you could potentially see. Those are typically for restaurants.
No, we should, we should...
Madam Chair, actually, you just haven't seen them for a while because they weren't issuing them, but even the special event licenses for liquor come before this board.
Okay. So, if you want to keep it as it is, we could, we could keep that and just bring it before the board, and then they would get the approval. I don't know if it's gonna be enough for what the governor wants, but something, something, we need some direction as to whether a procedure for special events of fifty or more people, so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to get some clarification on Mojave County Fairgrounds is within the city limits of Kingman, Arizona, but many of the actions taken by the governor has completely shut down the operations of Mojave County Fairgrounds, really has put that organization into a tremendous economic turmoil. So, I firmly believe that we need to set some type of direction. Currently, I believe that when there are gatherings, that the management of the fairgrounds has been going to Ms. Burley for instruction on how to, to have those events, and by the ability of Mojave County Board of Supervisors authorizing those liquor licenses would help those revenues for Mojave County Fairgrounds, so. I would propose a motion that we continue to have the Health Department outline the requirements for the gatherings over fifty, and then the liquor licenses, as they have always been, come to the Board of Supervisors. Does that satisfy?
I, I hope so. I, I want to be as, as accommodating as possible to this board and as flexible as we can, but ensuring that we're complying with the law, and I think that will do it. I mean, keep in mind, again, we're only talking about the unincorporated area of Mojave County, and we're talking about public events, so.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus. I was under the impression that the state isn't granting any liquor licenses for public events.
Well, I, just so you can see, forty-three said, "No more." So, Executive Order said, "None." Fifty-two then extended that, "None." Fifty-nine, what was just passed, said, "Okay, we'll start allowing it if you do A, B, and C," whatever. So, I think this is the process to allow them to start doing it again.
Right.
So, I just want to give them an opportunity, and I think that what propose, what Supervisor Watson is proposing, we can do. So, basically, they would do as, as they're doing now, and they would be referred to public health to make sure that they've got these things, and if everything was good, they would move forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Go ahead. So, would we then have to have a process to know, because liquor license come through my office and then to the board, so would there need to be a process where we need to verify they've gone through the Health Department process? the Health Department process, so that we're ensuring we're not jumping the gun on anything?
Somehow, somehow or another, we're gonna have, any, any, any event that's approved, that has, it has to be placed on our website. So somehow, some way, somebody's gotta say stamp of approval, and then it goes on our website, at which point then the website says, this person, this event is approved, and here are the mitigation measures for COVID-19 to reduce the spread. We have the Health Department here, I don't want to put you on the spot, and I'm sorry, I know that you were already here for a lot of other things. But, and I want to make it as easy as possible, I'm just, if there is a public event of fifty or more, I want to make sure that that event can go forward safely. I don't want to, I don't, I, I would hate to see somebody plan and have everything ready to go, and then suddenly they can't get their liquor license or something.
And Madam Chair, we, we will also want to ensure that in this process, there's plenty of time for the liquor license process because by statute, they require to receive it at least minimum ten days before an event. So it has to go through our process and be to the liquor license and control ten days prior to any event. Otherwise, they don't have enough time to approve them on their end, and license does actually come from them.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't see a problem with this, I mean, we can make everybody aware of the conditions they have to follow, and I'm sure they are now if they want to get a certain permit. And just like approving the security at these events that we do when we approve the liquor license, we just do it all at the same time. I, I don't see where we're gonna have a big problem with it.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Johnson. Denise?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have provided guidance and direction to Tim Woods throughout this to try to give them some opportunity to go and mitigate issues and concerns. And he has been very respectful of those plans and has followed those to a T, so we have continued to offer that to him and that service. We do have a staff person who wears many hats, but that is one of them, is to review plans that are put forth and provide guidance and direction and ask for revisions and provide suggestions, and then we provide that back. We don't do any enforcement activity, it's really recommendations.
So if I understand the motion correctly, it would be that we go through the normal process, where they go and get a liquor license approval here, they'd be referred to Public Health for those recommendations, like we just talked about. But if I could just add, then, are we gonna post it on the website? Because it says it has to be posted on, it says, "For organized public events that have been approved by a county, the jurisdiction shall publicly post the mitigation measures that the event organizer is required to implement and enforce on the jurisdiction's website and submit a copy to Arizona Department of Health Services."
Yeah, website included.
So how will that work, I just, how will that go?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Supervisor Watson, would you like to go first?
Go ahead.
I was just going to suggest that it's not approved until the board approves it. And so the, the implication of the Executive Order that it, that the plan presents mitigation measures that are acceptable common sense standards, so that, whether it comes to the clerk of the board or directly to the Department of Public Health, that eventually it goes through Public Health for input and for preliminary concurrence and, and agreement, and then it comes to the board through the clerk of the board, and once the board approves it, then I think it would make sense for the clerk of the board to post it on the website. That'd be my suggestion.
Madam Chair, only if health is providing me with all their mitigation strategies, plans, and everything else. Because for, for me to put a liquor license forward, I don't need that, it's, it's the health side of the house that needs that, which we're happy to do it as long as it's all provided so we can do it properly.
Could that be, could that be part of the paperwork they would submit to the board with their application for the liquor license?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, the application for liquor license comes from
The department.
ED LLC, not from the county, so I can't change their application. If the county wants to implement a, a secondary application to go with it, then that would be at the county's discretion. But as far as the actual liquor license application, we can't change those.
Well, maybe, possibly to make this a little simpler. Once that organization presents its COVID plan, along with the application for the liquor license, then we could approve it here at, at this step. Is that?
Yep.
Follow up?
I think that makes sense. And then, and then afterwards, who's gonna post it on the website?
And then be posted after the action.
Yeah.
So hopefully that clears up my motion.
I think so, I, I, basically, the motion is to the approve, the, the regular process of approving a liquor license with the additional, with the addition of getting the recommendation from the Public Health Department.
Public Health Department.
Of its approval, and then the posting of the mitigation measures on the website.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Ryan, didn't that Executive Order also talk about, the agency had to provide enforcement?
Yeah, so it says, additionally, if the event is approved, the city, town, or county shall dedicate reasonably adequate resources to enforcing mitigation measures that the organizer has agreed to implement during the organized public event and any public health requirements currently applicable in the jurisdiction.
So you're also gonna have to assess enough of a fee to provide that service? Because that's, I believe that's additional above how it's normally done.
I'm not prepared to do a fee here, to impose a fee, we would have to go through a, a public process of, of, of asking, of doing a fee. Anytime, anytime we impose a fee, we have to do a public hearing on it. I'm trying to make this as, as easy and simple as possible. I would just say that, I don't, I don't know, if we could have some, some to the effect of, we'll do our, we'll do our best, so to speak, I, I don't know.
Madam Chairman, Ryan, when they're talking about enforcement, are they talking about law enforcement or Health Department enforcement?
I think the implication is the Health, is the Health Department. And again, and, and just so you're aware, we're not, and, and the Public Health is not enforcing this in the sense of, of, of going out and policing it, saying, no, you can't do this, not, no, that's not what they're doing, they're just recommending, these are what we recommend that you do, and so on. Is that correct?
That is correct, we provide recommendations.
And I don't, I'm not suggesting that we change that, I'm, you know, I, I mean, I don't think they have the resources to do that. But, but you, you do pose an interesting dilemma, let's put it that way.
Madam Chairman, Ryan, it, it sounds like the governor's requesting onsite enforcement of the, of the COVID regulations.
I, if they were to ask me, does it require onsite enforcement, I don't read that far into it, certainly they could if they wish, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that they would have to, because it doesn't say onsite. It just says reasonably adequate resources to enforce mitigation measures that the organizer has agreed to implement.
Okay.
I mean.
And possibly that was part of the $25,000 grant that they offered, knowing that we would have to do a little more with this new 2020-59.
Madam Chairman, if I might add, the applicant has a responsibility to perform. So their enforcement is mostly, as I read it, is by the applicant, along with our Health Department, recommendations. The recommendations mitigated the whole proposed plan.
Yes, the ultimate, the ultimate, the ultimate responsibility is upon the applicant, the, the organizer of the event.
Thank you. Right, I do have a motion on the floor, I believe.
Okay. Has it been seconded?
Second.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Supervisor Angus. Supervisor Johnson, did you have anything to add?
No ma'am, I was just seconding.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Last and final item on the agenda, item fifty-six. It's a discussion of possible action, an update from the County Public Health Director regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19 updates and taking any necessary actions based upon the updates. We do have a couple people signed up to speak, but Denise, I'll go ahead and let you do your presentation first.
Okay, great, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll start off as I usually do with the numbers. As of Friday, December fourth, there have been a total of 6,783 COVID-19 cases in the county to date. 4,919 of those cases have recovered, 250 deaths. The average age of cases is 47.9, average age of deaths is 76.1. Okay. I have a hospital update, and this update will actually be part of the, the packet that is sent out later, but I'll just provide it up here if you, if you are okay with that. So hospitals continue to show dangerous strain on resources due to COVID, increased COVID illness. Hospitalizations and death rates typically lag about 21 days behind ED COVID visits, which means we are only seeing the beginning of inpatient demands resulting from this most recent surge. Some facts, average number of COVID patients seen in the ED continues to increase, and these are all based on information that we get aggregated from all the hospitals in the county. As of 12/5, two out of four hospitals are on caution status due to no ICU critical care unit beds. Two hospitals have zero to three med surg beds available, and other two hospitals have seven to eight med surg beds available. Three out of four hospitals report zero to one ICU beds available. Three out of four hospitals are on contingency status, which if defined, it means the space, spaces, staff, and supplies used are not consistent with daily practices but provide care that is functionally equivalent to usual patient care and practices. And of the three hospitals that have responded, 17 to 23% of all hospitalized patients are COVID positive, while 43 to 97% of all ICU patients are COVID positive. So it's quite a range for those COVID positive in the ICU at this point, but with the low end being 43%. Any questions on the hospital data?
Madam Chair. Supervisor Angus.
Well, we got our update today, and it's different than what you just said. And that's because things changed so rapidly, because
That is correct.
People seem to be going in and out quicker than they did. And I spoke to, I speak to the hospital CEO regularly, and he said the, the, everything seems to be weakening, so people are coming in and they're leaving quicker, so the stats today are much different than what you just said, with one hospital in that caution, but the other one's fine. So I just don't want to give the audience and the paper wrong idea, and then the headlines will be and everyone will be upset. It changes that quickly.
It, it does.
Right, and the one thing that they are all, I think, and we're all in agreement of, just like your staff, they're, they have staffing issues, they don't have enough people, and so hopefully, the, the one good thing that the governor has done is put more money towards staffing, and hopefully he'll release that quickly.
Yes.
And, and they can take advantage of that, but it's just, it, it, it changes so quickly from, from day to day.
It's very dynamic.
And I don't think that our press releases really reflect that. The, you know, the
Are you referring to our daily ones?
We're not really allowed to, I wish we would find out if we can say more at this point than we are still saying. And I would still like to see every day those reports come out, just so there's not like on a Monday, like today, we're expecting a lot, right?
Right, right.
Thanks.
Certainly, yes, and we did talk to that particular hospital staff late last week, and our, the answers that we got were different from yours, so in that particular case, they were under a great deal of strain those last Wednesday, let's say that would have been Wednesday night, Thursday night. And I believe some of the other hospitals are experiencing some strains, so. Those resources are, are just becoming a little bit less available, and you're right, it's a very dynamic situation with hospital data. It's, it's constantly being updated and constantly changing. So what we're focusing really on are those ICU beds and the availability of those, and, and what percentage of those are really COVID patients? And how is that impacting their business and their, and their services, so. So on investigations, sorry, I have a more updated piece of information on those. So, as you know, we've seen a large increase in cases for the last few weeks, so I wanted to give you an update on investigations. We've reached out to ADHS, as they have built up their capacity to assist with investigations, contact tracing, and contact monitoring. So we have been assigning cases to ADHS to assist us with this big increase, so we don't get behind in any, in any of these cases. And they say they have the resources to take on those cases. The lab turnaround time has been around four to six days, as you know, that's been a big increase, but ADHS is now stating that LabCorp and Sinarquest are going to be going to several shifts a day to increase that lab capacity and reduce that reporting time back to the, to the cases. Sorry, wow, that was loud. So I think we're on top of the investigations at this point. As you know, there's been some updated quarantine guidelines, and those were just released recently from CDC. And now, this recommendation is still for a person to quarantine for 14 days, that is the recommended timeframe. But individuals may be eligible for a shortened quarantine time if they meet certain conditions. For one, individuals do not live in a congregate setting. There's no clinical evidence of COVID-19 that's been elicited by daily symptom monitoring during the entirety of quarantine up to the time at which quarantine is discontinued. Daily symptom monitoring continues through quarantine day fourteen. Instrict adherence to all recommended non-pharmaceutical interventions such as correct and consistent mask use, physical distancing, and all of that continues through day fourteen. Just want to make sure we get some information out to the public about what those new requirements are.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Denise, so those are asymptomatic people that are eligible for the reduced quarantine period?
So those particular individuals are close contacts and under quarantine. So those that are close contacts to a case.
Do they have a positive test?
No.
Okay, so that's just the household members of the?
Household or friends or people that have been identified as close contacts to those cases.
Hey, earlier you spoke of 17 to 22% of patients in, is that with COVID in the hospital? It was back when you talked about the percentage of the ICU patients.
17 to 23% of all hospitalized patients are COVID positive.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Denise, just, just for clarification, so if you have contact with a positive person, okay? We ask that you go, all right, so how many days within that period? So if you find out a week later that someone that you were with was COVID positive, what should you do? A week later, seven days?
So in those cases, we would be, someone would likely be reaching out to you if you were identified as a close contact, and then we would ask that you monitor for symptoms, but also quarantine for a period in time. And actually, if I, if you don't mind, I would like Lynn Valentine, who's our nursing manager, to come up and speak to the exact requirements, so she can speak more eloquently to that.
Well, really the only reason I ask is because we just read today that the legislature, Rudy Giuliani was positive, and so a week ago, they had a hearing, and now they're closing up shop.
Right, right, and there's a, there's a window in time that you would go back and, and review the information about that particular case and identify those close contacts, and then you would, you would look at when they were symptom, when symptom onset started, so, yeah, jump in, please.
So she's correct, so symptom onset and then two days before. If somebody is asymptomatic but test positive, then we use the test date and go two days before then to determine close contacts.
Okay.
Thanks.
Supervisor Gold.
And if they were symptomatic?
2 days before their symptom onset.
So 2 days for both symptomatic and non-symptomatic?
Right. So we would use the 2 days. So if symptomatic person, we'd look at their date of symptom onset and go back 2 days to determine who are close contacts. If they're asymptomatic and test positive, since we don't have a symptom onset date, we use the test date and then go back 2 days.
Wasn't it 4 days previously?
No, not 4. It was 2. I think for a while there, they were going back quite a bit farther, like 14 at the very beginning.
Okay.
But not 4.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Those guidelines also are on the ADHS website for anybody to review if they're interested. So they're under the release from isolation and quarantine guidelines. And it'll have a date of 12/4/2020 as the update.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're hearing that Pfizer's announced that they're reducing their initial vaccine dose to half. Can you tell us what that means for us, and if you have any idea how many doses we will get the initial back, and how many of that will be for each city?
Yes, and you're jumping ahead of me here, Supervisor Johnson. I have a whole vaccine update for you.
Oh, I thought you were done. Keep going ahead.
No, it's totally fine. It's all good. I'll just start moving on to that section of it, okay? So what we know so far, and granted, it's another moving target here that we need to, that we get information daily on and try to move with that. So we'll be receiving approximately 212,000 doses of the Pfizer vaccine in December, and then approximately 171,000 doses of the Moderna vaccine in December. Again, those are just estimates at this point. As you know, it changes, and you see a lot of media attention. This is what we know today. So you can see there's going to be a fair amount of vaccine coming to the state, and then that vaccine will then be allocated out to the counties at that point, who will then allocate out to those other facilities, hospitals, and depending upon the situation, healthcare providers to assist with the vaccinations.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Sherman. Denise, can you give me those numbers again?
Sure. 212,000 for Pfizer and 171,000 for Moderna.
Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson, did that answer your question?
Is that for the state or for us?
That's for the state.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So we continue to participate in weekly meetings with ADHS to gather more information, learn more information about the vaccine allotment and the process. And additionally, we meet internally, usually 2 to 3 times a week, to discuss how this will be rolled out into the community. And as you know, there are huge differences between the 2 vaccines, between Pfizer and Moderna. Both the storage temperature for Pfizer and Moderna, which I learned was minus 4 Celsius, I think it's, and I can check my text. But again, the storage requirements and the usage requirements are very, very different for those 2 vaccines. When the COVID vaccine is authorized by the FDA and recommended by the CDC Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, commonly known and what you might see as ASIP, vaccinations in the initial phase of COVID vaccination program, this will be Phase 1A, should be offered to both healthcare personnel and residents of long-term care facilities, and again, emergency medical responders. That'll be a fairly good-sized group. What we're unsure of, and what we're checking with as far as hospitals and these different groups, is what percentage of that group actually want the vaccine, because we don't anticipate that 100% of the people will want that vaccine. And it will not be mandatory. Our information so far is it will not be mandatory. There may be employment requirements that are out of our control. Those will be just employers who require that as part of their employment. But, you know, public health is not making that requirement out there.
Supervisor Gold.
Ryan, would fire districts have the authority to require their employees to be vaccinated?
It's a good question. I really, I'm trying to think what employer could require it. I don't know the answer, I'm sorry.
You might take a look into that.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Thank you, sir.
As part of that Phase 1A, I mentioned that there'll be long-term care facilities and skilled nursing facilities part of that group. They have the ability right now to work with Walgreens and CVS to actually have that service provided within their facility. And so all skilled nursing facilities, long-term and assisted living facilities, have the ability to sign up for this program, in which Walgreens and CVS will take on that responsibility to vaccinate their patients and their staff. So that will take a large group out of our hands and put it into the Walgreens-CVS world. And in addition, we're working with each of our hospitals to determine the best path to get the vaccine out to not just their healthcare providers within their facility, but community providers providing those services, and EMS.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, when you were talking about the number of doses, was that, since both of those require 2 vaccinations, is that the number for both of the vaccinations or sets of vaccines?
That is just the initial dose.
Okay.
The second dose will be received later. So those doses are all just first doses.
Thank you.
And so we will be receiving another shipment equal to that in the future for those second doses.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus.
Are they recommending that if people already have it, people who've had COVID, are they recommending they take the vaccination?
At this time, it's anybody who has had it or has not.
So you're saying everybody?
Correct.
And have they done testing on people who have had it?
I couldn't answer that. I'm not sure about that.
I sure hope they did.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Did we ever determine whether, in their human testing, that they exposed the vaccinated population to the virus or not? I cannot find where they have ever done that.
I don't believe so.
So we just, they effectively inoculated them, observed them, saw that 5% of them became ill with COVID, and then determined that the vaccine was then 95% effective?
I can't speak to the specifics of the study, but I do not believe that they purposely exposed them to COVID.
Thank you.
The other consideration to take into our thought pattern and our planning is that there are specific side effects, the body's response basically to the vaccine. And so we are working with, especially say, for example, a firehouse, you wouldn't necessarily choose to have your whole firehouse vaccinated on the same day, because some of them may spike a fever. It's a very low percent, but it's still a consideration here that it could affect their shifts and their working environment. So we are working with them on that as well, and the need to kind of spread out those options for vaccinations over a period of time.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, what are the side effects?
You could spike a fever, there's muscle aches, anything else? Oh, headaches, fatigue, thank you.
It's almost the same symptoms as if you had the COVID?
Almost, yes.
Do they know if the people that are vaccinated will become contagious? I don't think so, because it works, it modifies your own RNA.
No, correct. It helps to develop antibodies, so the person would not be contagious.
So it's not like smallpox, where the blister on your arm was then contagious with smallpox?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions on vaccine?
None.
Okay. I didn't have any other specific information to share at this point. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus has a question.
Not so much a question, but a comment, and I'd like your, so I had my system put together a document for me of all the COVID cases per month since April, and then the deaths that month and the percentages. And it's just been very interesting. Up until this past November, our highest month was July, and there were 1,878 cases and 62 deaths for a 3.3% death rate, okay? In November, we had 1,979 cases with 25 deaths for a 1.2% death rate. And, you know, I've been saying, I know some other people aboard have been saying all along that we are looking really at the death rates and the hospitals. Those are, to me, really the only 2 measures. I mean, case numbers are interesting, but people get sick, they cycle out, they get better. Someone asked me, how do you know how many people recover? It was like, well, subtract the deaths, and that's how many people have recovered. And so we're seeing better response, as I've spoken to doctors, because they've got better therapeutics, they've got, and they've told me that they believe that the virus is weakening as these things do happen. So given that, do you think that all of these other things that are going on are really necessary based on, we're trying to get down the number of cases, and it just appears, because now we've got a history, right? We've got time to look at what's happened. Every time we close down, we open up, and then it gets bigger. So all the things put together, I think, I just don't want to scare people, that we're kind of on a good track. Yeah, people are getting sick, but they're not getting as bad sick, and they're getting better, less deaths. And one other piece of information that we're not getting is the assisted livings. I believe, I don't know this for a fact, that it's had been cycled through again, that there were some problems with some of the assisted living. So when you see the deaths, because they tend still to be of, I think the average now is 70, the age is 78. Our deaths in the last 3, 4 weeks have been a higher age range. I've noticed, probably 79 and above. Not that that is a good thing, everyone's life is precious, but it tells a story. We're not seeing that, those low numbers like we did back in July, August, September. Is that all correct?
Overall, yes. I don't think we've seen the severity of the virus within long-term care facilities. They also have a lot of mitigation strategies in place. Depending upon the spread level of, in that particular county, they're required to do a certain amount of testing of both patients and staff on a weekly basis to try to mitigate and control. So I believe when you, you know, when you add those steps into the process, you find yourself in a more preventive role.
Right.
Which is where we would prefer.
Right. Because we know a lot more today than we did back in April, and people are taking better responsibility for their own health. But my point is, I wish that we could tell that story better, and whether we can do it through our PIO, or I wish the media would do a little investigative reporting and really look behind the numbers and tell really the story. So that's sort of like a challenge I'm putting out there for the media, because I think people deserve that.
Right, right. And I do agree that hospitalizations and hospital capacity is really a main driver of decisions, to try to keep their capacity low enough to handle all cases that come in through their door, and not just COVID cases. Is there any other questions?
No, that's it. Okay. No other questions, but I do have 2 people that would like to speak. Thank you for being so patient, Scotty.
I think my battery went dead here on this. This thing works really good, by the way, when it's working.
We'll get you some new batteries.
Bring my own next time. Yeah, I want to know, this newspaper, how are we going to get information on who's going to get, I know that the hospital workers should be first in line, that I agree with. The teachers probably, let's get these kids back to school. I'm over 65, in fact, over 70, and I have COPD, and I'm, you know, I'm really sweating this stuff. I don't go anywhere hardly, except to here. And so how do I find out when my turn comes? Because this newspaper doesn't print hardly anything about this. This is Sunday's paper, though. Look at the length of this. They got 3 pages of 911 emergency. Page number 1, county sets new record, but here's page number 2 and 3. It's all about 911, 9111, 911. Down here, they have a little thing here that says, you can do all, do on this dot-commy stuff. Every day, they have that in. They're only printing 5 days a week now. I don't do computers, I don't do this.
Sir, I'll personally get in touch with you as soon as we find out. How does that sound?
Huh?
I'll personally get in touch with you as soon as we find out.
That'd be fine, because I don't want to have to go down to that thing that you have at the college, and ask them. I guess they're the ones going to be doing it, probably.
You can have my dose. I'll make sure that you...
I am going to be first in line.
I'll make sure you're a priority, sir.
God damn it.
So our next speaker is Darlene Creek.
You give your name and city of residence, please.
My name's Darlene Creek, and I live in Golden Valley.
I can't take any...
That's one of my questions that I'm having here, is we're having an issue with, I own a bar, along with a few other people, and they're confused too, about jurisdiction. I know that you guys changed the mask mandates on your Golden Valley, King Ben, Lake Havasu. Did it change on the county? Because I'm in the county.
The county has no restrictions in the unincorporated area of Mojave.
Oh, okay. See, I wasn't aware of that. So I'm not required to make sure that people wear masks, and my employees, and stuff like that?
Actually, the state of Arizona has restrictions on various businesses, so it's different than the county.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Governor Ducey said that with the bars, the restaurants, and gyms, that you have to have certain restrictions. But the reason I'm asking this is because I got a letter from the state liquor board saying that as long as it's not required by my jurisdiction, that I don't have to comply with that. Is this true, or I'm confused?
Doesn't sound right. You know, there's executive orders that the governor has put forward.
This is the liquor board. And I got turned in to the liquor board, not the Health Department, by somebody we're not going to mention. Anyways.
Was it me?
It says that...
It was not me, right?
It wasn't you. I know you've been accused. Specifically, it says, now is your opportunity to comply. Specifically comply with the governor's executive orders and the health guidance from the Arizona Department of Health and CDC. Ensure patrons are practicing social distancing, and ensure that patrons are wearing face coverings if required by your jurisdiction. And this is where I'm confused. I mean, Governor Ducey's saying this, the liquor board's saying this, you're saying this. What is my rules?
Mr. Aspen? I know you missed part of the conversation, but this lady...
I'm sorry, I'm not...
This lady has a business in Golden Valley. She was notified by written letter from the liquor board that she's got to comply with the governor's executive orders, and then they throw in a little caveat, unless your county doesn't enforce or doesn't have a mask mandate.
If it's required by you, then I have to do it. The original executive orders from the liquor board did not give us rules. It said we have to comply with your rules.
So were you granted a liquor license or not?
Oh, yes. I've had one for a while.
So you still have the liquor license?
Yes.
So what's the problem here?
I got turned in by somebody that apparently I had a problem with my business, to the liquor board, not the Health Department. And the liquor board is telling me that I have to comply if you... And the liquor board is telling me that I have to comply if you guys... It said, "If it's required by my jurisdiction, I have to do it." So the masks are not required in my jurisdiction, so I'm confused at whose rules do I follow? Yours, Governor Ducey's, or the state liquor board?
Well, I mean, as far as the rules on masks, Mojave County doesn't have one. What I would suggest that you work with the liquor board to explain that Mojave County does not have a mask prohibition or a mask requirement, excuse me, a mask requirement here in Mojave County. And so I'd recommend you talk with them about that. I can't speak for them. I don't know why they've said that in there. But what I would suggest is that you talk with them and explain that, hey, Mojave County doesn't have that. So from us, if you're asking us, well, what rules are you supposed to follow here? Mojave County doesn't have one.
Because if there's an issue, Mojave County Health Department is going to show up in my business. And so I need to know, am I complying with you?
Well, those are the requirements from the Arizona Department of Health Services that the health department is following. And so you would follow any guidelines from the Arizona Department of Health Services.
Okay. And another question I have is, Governor Ducey has said that he's got the two complaint rule. Are you guys going to ensure that these complaints are valid? Or is somebody going to get upset with a business saying, "I don't like this person," or blah, blah, and make a complaint and force this person to be shut down with too many complaints? Or are they going to be valid complaints? Are you going to investigate?
Well, I don't know. I have not looked into what the governor has recently said on the two violations. I haven't. That was news to me today. I looked at the other executive orders and things. It's not in his executive orders. It looks like it's from the Arizona Department of Health Services. And so I'll look into that and then we'll advise the health department accordingly. But let me circle back, and I can see a little bit where the confusion is, and I'm sorry to go back a little bit. Mojave County does not have a mask requirement. And what I said was absolutely true. But the part that I think that may be a little bit tricky and what you may be getting some issues with is Arizona Department of Health Services may require your... Arizona Department of Health Human Services requires your restaurant or you are... Is it a restaurant or a business? I'm sorry.
It's a business. It's a bar that's operating as a restaurant for the...
So there is where you may have a mask requirement, where Department of Health Services requires that. That's where you're going to have that issue. So in terms of talking to Department of Liquor, you explain to them, Mojave County doesn't have one from us, but there may be requirements from the Arizona Department of Health Services. So you're going to have to take up your issue with Arizona Department of Health Services and their requirements. That's where you're going to have to take it up, as well as with the Department of Liquor.
Okay.
Those are the two you're going to have to deal with. I'm sorry for the confusion. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to kind of shoot him from the hip here. But that's where the requirement for the mask comes in, is from the Department of Health Services is where they say, "No, because of the nature of your business, you require it."
Okay. I understand. All right.
Madam Chair? Can you get us a copy of that letter? I'd like to see it.
I have it here.
Okay.
Is there any way you can get a copy before I leave?
If you're going to stay till the end?
I will.
Okay, because we're all on the stand, I believe.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ma'am? Did you operate as a bar before this all broke and then you switched into serving food also to stay open?
Well, in March, they shut down the whole state, right?
Right.
And then in June, again, they... He shut down the Class 6 and 7s. I am a Class 6, and I was operating as a bar.
Okay.
But in order to reopen, I was coerced into signing this paper saying I'm going to do 25% food and operate as a restaurant.
So then you had to get a health department permit for the food?
Oh, I had a health department. Because I serve bar food, I just had to provide more food.
Yeah, the volume... Your volume of food was not high enough to be a Class 7?
Yes.
Okay. So they came in and you had to sign away your rights to get to open your business back up?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And Darlene, on your other question on complaints, our public health department does take complaints. We no longer take anonymous complaints, but they still will take complaints and they're required to check those complaints out.
Well, I'm not concerned about that because I'm in compliance and my bartenders and I do our best to make sure that everything is the way it's supposed to be. So I just was curious about in the future because, you know...
And just for those watching on video, county supervisors don't go out and investigate and make complaints.
Okay.
Supervisor Bishop...
Unless Mr. Watson does.
I might be interested in attending that establishment. I wouldn't say include all of the board of supervisors. From time to time, I do enjoy going to one of those establishments, so. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other further discussion? If not, I'll...
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Director Burley, when we're setting up these clinics that we'll eventually have where we should be giving the shots out, I'm sure you've probably already done it, but, you know, we've taken the money and funded the sheriff's department, so I really think we should probably have some kind of security at these sites when you get going.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Yes, that is on our list. Motion to adjourn? Okay. Thank you very much for coming.